Good afternoon. We've had a number of discussions with the Board of County Commissioners informally as it relates to an industrial park in Union County. We thought it was an appropriate time to talk about it formally with the Board as it relates to the potential sites, as well as it relates to the process and methodology. And that's the purpose of what we're here, at least the first part of your work session today. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Plante.
Hey, Ron. Is that going to be Mr. Pop? A lot of folks here. Just for the record, tonight, the 58-year consecutive losses of Clemson and Travis will end. Just want to make sure. Well, thank you so much for letting us discuss the industrial park. But again, we've been through basically review, some of the successes as a result of the actions of the Board, and why we create the industrial park, the criteria, methods of that development, as some of Williams pointed out, a potential timeline, direction from the Board on the method and the site discussion and direction on the site. So first of all, just a quick review in, since this Board took action to merge EDC, basically January 1st, 2013, by joining the organizations, you've saved the taxpayers $2.2 million in administration costs, both the two organizations. You've increased effectiveness in the organization, and you've decreased confusion in our industries and the prospects. We've adopted the first-ever county-wide economic development plan, and it's in its second revision right now. We've enhanced the incentive guidelines. Again, that was one of the first actions that we did within the first part, was six to nine months with the merger. Since then, we've been ranked number one in North Carolina for new investment, number 39 in the U.S. in 2015. Created $461 million, almost 1,700 new jobs, and annually generate, now because of those jobs, generate $65 million in new salaries in our county. We've created the Economic Development Infrastructure Fund, and now the next step, looking at doing an industrial park. So why build it? Well, the WYG study made it pretty clear that our residential, as we all know, the residential is so heavily weighted in our tax base that we need to try to do something to offset that. That 83% consumes 93% of our adware and taxes. So the county lost $14.4 million, again, in the 2015 year numbers due to the residential that generated $27.8 million from industrial, commercial. Therefore, every house is subsidized, basically $500 by every industrial, commercial property. We have very little product. We've done, we're very successful. As a result, the development of new product has not kept up with the same pace. One of the things that were asked of us a while back was to find out some of this information. So the first eight months of 2017, 77% of our lost projects were a result of not having buildings or sites. The local development community is fairly dormant until recently, and then outside land developers are not yet looking in the Union County. So basically, an industrial park can help the county achieve closer balance to that 64-year magic number between residential and commercial, and it will also prime the pump. Competition creates competition, and so therefore, we anticipate that the development of industrial park will help private developers come into the county. Similar counties, what they're doing, Cabarrus County is looking at basically private sector distribution parks that are there along the interstate. They are interested in other avenues of developing to get away from distribution and go toward more manufacturing. Most of their economy resides in the retail side with tourism, and then also in distribution. Lincoln County has done land options. This is something that we've talked about several times. They have a very good model with the way that they option land from an owner, and then work to develop that site and then take that land down as it's affordable or as companies come in. Gaston County is a mix. They're mostly counting on the industrial parks and spec buildings, and they're currently doing another one right now, as well as expanding the Gaston Tech Park. And then Lower County is again, is another combination of private, public, and utility development. In York County, York County Electric Corp owns East York Industrial Park and builds spec buildings for themselves in there. As you can see, Cabarrus, Gaston, and York all have interstates. Lincoln County has 321, which is in essence an interstate linking Catawba County and Gaston County. So when we look at a site, for us to go ahead and do this, it can't be a small site. I mean, we have to have at least 100 acres of usable land. We have to have access to larger utilities. A four-inch sewer line is not going to be accessible for what, or necessary for the type of projects that we would bring. We need to access commercial runways. Development costs and challenges on the site are always going to be critical. The cost of land, the ease of assembly, so if there's multiple landowners, how friendly are they to work together to help us assemble that property? As well as control the development and zoning, one of the things is trying to keep that within the county's control. So again, as a result, we have looked throughout the county for that. When we look at the methods, there's basically three methods that we've talked about. The first is the Monroe model, which is publicly owned. This is basically purchasing the land outright. It's a cash transaction. It's immediate control, internal control of the project. You have the least risk compared to the other models in the sense that you do control this. It doesn't have a higher capital requirement in the sense that you're having to outlay cash to control the land right now. Most of the landowners would clearly be willing to do this. This is something that, you're going to get cash from my land, I'll sell it to you, not a problem. And it's the quickest way to develop the site. If you look at another version of publicly owned, there's the Lincoln County model, which is an assignable option. So you basically option the land with the owner or owners. You have immediate control, but you can only still have partial control because you don't actually own the property. There could be some issues with rezonings or covenants and things like that attached to the property. You have less risk compared to other methods. It's lower capital requirement because you're not actually acquiring all the land at once. And some owners are willing to accept this, some may not, because again, it requires them to hold the land for a while. And it is, again, a quicker way to develop the site. The public-private partnership, or PPP, is a typical method used in development. It is a legal action, legal agreement transaction. So basically, you're forming a company, for lack of better terms, with a partner. You have immediate control, but it will still be partial in the sense that you have a partner. And that partner, because their investment is going to have some say in that development. There's less risk because again, there's less outlay of cash and other things. But the land would need to be acquired and optioned via the partnership. So that group would still need to find a way to control that and establish the price. There'd be some moderate capital requirement because you're cost-sharing with the partner. So if you're putting in sewer, what are they going to do? Is it their land? Is it, you know, there's some other partnership in the cost. And then most landowners are not capable of doing this because they don't necessarily have the resources to help participate. So you would either buy the land into a group with other partners that would help develop it. It's a slower way to develop the project, but it is a viable method. The developer agreement is really just a variation of the public-private partnership. It's significantly detailed legal agreement because there's going to be a lot more moving parts in this. And so we'd have to have options to ensure land purchase prices between whether the county purchased it, whether a company purchased it, different things like that. What's the payback to the partnership or to the county for its participation? It's immediate, again, partial control, similar to the last one. It's got the most risk compared to the other methods due to the least amount of control because again, there's other say with that partnership group. So you've got the most risk from a control standpoint. But again, it is lower capital requirement, and you know, similar to the previous one, there's cost sharing with the partner. So most landowners, again, are not capable of accepting this type of method because they don't have the resources. So that is something that we were considering when looking at sites as well. The partner could be required to construct buildings. It could be other things in the development side of the project. So if we do this, we would need you to help support some other development on site to help spur the growth of the park. And it would be the slowest way to develop, simply because of the legal side of putting this thing together. Other methods, which are really not even something we would want to pursue, is basically assembling and zoning of the land, and then pitching that to private developers, quasi-development. So basically, it's costly because you've got to buy the land, and you've got to hold it for a while until you find somebody to develop it. The other is to install utilities into an area, and then they have a larger footprint of acreage. That's going to be costly to run that infrastructure, but you're going to have absolutely no control. You will not know if that will develop industrial or residential. And our goal here in this discussion is industrial. So basically, there's three phases. And we'll talk about this in a second bit. It's basically, you know, establishing the place, doing your own environmental testing and geotechnical testing, all the things to go into evaluating the site to see if this site even works. Some of the preliminary design, laying things out, seeing what our overall cost of development will be. Then negotiating those agreements and start building the infrastructure. And then phase three is what we do, is marketing and selling the property. So looking at it from the four things that we just talked about, so in the publicly owned version, again, quickest to develop, and let me put a caveat that these are mostly estimations. So again, we've got more experience in the publicly owned from the Monroe side than we do any of the others. So these are our estimations. There's so many moving parts that could really pull a wrench into it in these timelines. So please don't take them as gospel. But basically, looking at the quickest to develop is public-owned. Within six months, you have your negotiations done, you've had your testing done, all your valuations, and be moving right into construction of some of the utilities. And then phase three is that marketing site is ongoing until you close out the project. The publicly owned with the option agreement may take a little bit longer over time just to include the negotiations and get all the, you know, the inflation numbers worked out as you hold land every five years, and may go up a little bit in that option price. You want to ensure that all the partners are protected there. Again, about the same time to construct and then ongoing. In the public-private partnership, it could take a little bit longer, again, because you just get more, the more legalities, the more issues that have to be addressed in an agreement, that's just going to take longer because you've got more people involved. Depending on the requirements, this could take longer. But again, it's this pushing phase two out, and then ongoing from there. Same thing with the developer agreement. It will definitely take a longer time to put that together, just because of all the potential trip wires for all the partners involved. We want to make sure that we cover our bases. And then, again, depending on the demands that come out of that agreement, it could be much shorter, but we're not sure. So we're just sort of throwing this out there, just trying to cover our bases here to understand the true timeframe, and then phase three obviously ongoing until the project closes out. So given that, I want to kind of throw that to you, open it up for discussion, questions, and hopefully, let's try to pick a method, if we can, to go forward.
How, the last building, Monroe did, just occupied, if I recall?
No, Spec 4 is still available. Spec 3 was sold to Glenmark Pharmaceutical.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. How long was that process?
It was about six to nine months, from the time it was completed to the time they bought.
No, but you're talking phase one.
Oh, that was a building. That was a building, not the park. So we're talking about just the park development.
Okay.
So to get to that point, there was a lot of work because we had to design the water, sewer extensions, design the roadway. It was just a thousand-foot cul-de-sac road. So even to open up the land for that building to exist, there was a good, it took longer than we want. It was probably about nine months of construction just to get the base infrastructure in place. And that's with infrastructure already there. It's really just extensions. It takes some time. It's one of those, particularly when it's government bidding, and you know, there's just hurdles and timeframes that are blocked into the, into the method that you can't, you can't really.
Because looking at your novels, it looks like the delta's six months.
On the first part.
First phase.
But again, that's.
Eighteen to twenty-four is still six months, so it's, they're close.
Yeah. Please understand, these are just kind of guest estimates. And I'm not, we're not really pushing either way. We know the publicly owned version from what, you know, 350 acres and 500 acres and the corporate center I bought and developed. So I know that. The others, we're, you know, we're basing that on other people's experiences in other places.
Mr. Rush, thank you, Mr. Simpson. We've talked about this many times, and we know that the Union County Public Schools is building a bus garage at the airport.
Correct.
We've had several meetings on this. You know, everything that we've talked about is trying to, you know, that I understand is trying to get something going where we have land already zoned industrial. You don't have to go through a zoning process. Everything's ready to go, except for the need for sewer. And we do need sewer for Union County Public Schools at the bus garage. So, you know, again, I'm still stuck on that area. Land's zoned, everything's ready to go, and the only thing we need to do is put sewer lines in and get it to the school bus garage, and then conserve that whole area. So that looks like you're saying that's the most least desirable property.
No, no, this is not that property. It's just a net.
No, no, that's the least desirable option. Oh, yeah, step to the very bottom.
We can do all of those on any of the properties that we've discussed with you guys.
So the land's already owned. It's got a developer, we're on the development. Why would we not go about?
It's not necessarily least desirable, it just has more, there's just more things that just could make you aware of.
Well, they would have to, like a home builder, for example. If a home builder came in and said, okay, you have a sewer line connected to this development down the road, I want to hook my sewer line onto this sewer line that's already there. They would compensate the owners, the ones that put the line in originally. Wouldn't there be some compensation to that?
I think what Chris is trying to say with respect to the, and if I'm putting words in your mouth, please correct me, with respect to the timeline is that, you know, he has had discussions with Mr. Long and Mr. Crook as it related to the developer agreement. We have not done a developer agreement in Union County. So it would probably require us bringing in some expertise to assist us in putting that together and having to negotiate with the landowners. So I think all he's trying to do is say it's not the least desirable or most desirable, it's just that trying to give a realistic timeline that before, you first have to really figure out what are the issues with respect to the property? Where the, how many wetlands are there? What is, land can in fact be developed? Can we somehow assemble the 100 acres that is what we desire to assemble? And then, once you get that information available, then you start negotiating with the landowner. You have initial discussions with them to make sure that they are willing sellers. But it's important, I think he's just trying to say is that it's an available option, but that it is more time-consuming than some of the other options that he's discussed.
Why would we want to buy that? Why would we not want to let them just do it as part of nature?
No, we can't, and again, I'm not recommending either. I'm just saying, these are the options, and there's some issues with all of them. One, you have to have more of a capital outlay. One, you don't, but there's other pieces that offset that. So they all, we can accomplish what we want to accomplish with any of them, you know, or any mixture of them. So it's not necessarily picking one, it's just making sure that you're aware of everything. I don't want to lead you down the path without giving you all the information.
One more comment I'd like to add. You know, we have larger tracts of land in eastern Florida County. We have areas that can accept new home growth and building, where we have plenty of them. The roads are not overcrowded, which, you know, people moving in to work at those industries, they would, you know, need a place to live. So, you know, really, I just see we have a utility fix and some utility things we need to do, and let the private sector, you know, work its magic. So I'm, I'm still where I'm in, is that we, we make sure that the Union County Bus Garage gets, the school bus garage gets their sewer. And if anybody wants to come to, we just have, they have to compensate house for the expense. And I think that's pretty easy. I think that's what we've done with developers, is they're building houses. I just hope to see why we can't do that with the industries that want to build too, is that that sewer is part of the house to the industry that's being built.
And again, I think you're exactly, I mean, that's what we're, in the developer agreement model, it'd be in the sauce for the cost of the land. There'd be an element that would come back and pay back.
I think in our discussions, we've, you know, had said before, government has no business in being in business. Although Seaman Row has done relatively well with their project, I don't know how much of an appetite there is to take risk on purchasing property for this enterprise. So if it appeared to me that a latter two may be the direction we want to go.
We can.
Mr. Simpson.
The, from a publically exposed standpoint, you mentioned it's the least risky because you control everything. But you're still, you're still subject to demand. So you own this property that may or may not be in demand. That's one of the concerns that I have with just buying better property outright. What, what return has Monroe seen from the return on their investment standpoint? And we always talk about when we do our step one grants or step two. What type of return has they seen on those investments, and what have the other counties seen in the way they do the different projects?
I would have to come back to you with that number, give you something exact, but it's hundreds of millions of dollars have been invested in that park, you know, by the private sector. In the airport area, there's probably 2,500, 30,000 jobs. So that would have developed residential next to the airport, would have choked the airport off. If Monroe had not annexed that property, purchased it, so it was only, Kennedy's only is residential.
Any idea what the profitability, the return has been for the other counties that have done a different?
I know that they continue to do it. I know the Gaston continues to invest in their park property.
Are they doing that as a philosophy, or because it's working? Yes. And I struggle because some, some government entities look at, they'll pump money in to stimulate business, but there's no real return other than just the job growth. There's still, some of the tax dollars are continuing to have to support that growth.
Correct.
I'm wondering, depending on which way we go, where's the least risk to the residents with the greatest opportunity for the return?
Right.
And that's what I don't want to do, is put $2, $3 million down on a piece of property, and it'd be 10 years and we're still sitting on a $2 or $3 million property.
Right.
We have a lot of property around the county that's owned in different ways by entities that just, there's no use for it right now. So it's just dollars that are tied up, and we're hoping that it appreciates enough to get your money back.
Yeah. Given that standard, I think you're looking over here, just Chairman Simpson, so. I think that's definitely where, given the criteria, this is where probably we want to be, because again, from a capital standpoint, you're going to have some infrastructure cost, but outside of that, you'll have some development cost as it develops, you phase your development, so putting in certain runways. But in the master planning, you would want to put that money in place upfront as well to sort of master plan it and maximize the land. Don't let it, a company grabs something and it leaves you with remnant pieces, and you don't maximize the property.
Mr. Adams. Yeah, I'm sorry. In last, it's mentioned, a couple million dollars, but if you choose to do the building like Monroe has, you, I think we've talked to past $5, $6 million.
Monroe's?
Cash outlay. So it makes a significant difference, and I concur with Commissioner Jerry Simpson in that I think, and I think we've got opportunities for the developer agreement, and also utilize, and I've spoken to some of the school board members since today, utilize, we had a bond to build a bus garage, and there's a cost associated. It's either we give to one of them, or we utilize it for ourselves would help build that infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really think if there's an answer to that, but yes, that's.
I mean, that's an opportunity we have.
Right.
And am I correct in saying that most of that land along Gold Mine is already zoned commercial?
Yes, it's, the one site we're talking about is heavy to the north and light industrial to the south.
Do you know if the Board has capability to modify that?
If, oh.
Yeah. So, you know, you may have commented on that, you know, then you have to go through the rezoning. Well, that's something we do.
Yeah, and a criteria standpoint is, let's say that, do you have the control over that rezoning versus handing that control to another entity?
Actually, Chris has two pieces to this presentation. One was to talk about delivering method, the other was to talk about the property itself. So I certainly don't want to put words in his mouth. Yes, I would just make a motion relating to what we just talked about.
Mr. Rush. I make a motion that we direct staff to immediately begin discussions with Union County Public Schools, of serving the bus garage with sewer, and with developing a plan to be compensated from the area already its own industrial around the airport to give back to the county, or to pay back the county's expense. And do you need that cleaned up any?
I understand the direction. The one concern I have, and we've talked about a little bit individually with some of the board members, is knowing what their timetable is and the public-private partnership and the developer agreement, and what those timetables are. I don't know if those two coincide. That's somewhat a concern I have.
That's probably why we need to start immediately and talk to them, because either we do it or don't. We've been talking about this for six months, and we've got plenty of time.
Well, the reason we brought it to the Board today is we have had two-on-one discussions with the board members. We have never officially gotten direction from the Board, and so in talking to the Chairman, we felt we should bring it to the Board and get direction from the Board so that as staff, we were being consistent with Board direction.
Is that a good motion? Do you want to add to it?
I guess, I guess I would say two things. One, can we add the type? Secondly, is that motion going to tie our hands in moving forward? I think it's two, potentially two separate things. I have a problem with your motion to move in that direction. Simply don't want to confuse the issue and make sure we stay on track with what we're attempting to do here. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me, let me clean it up. Just make, I'll try to clean it up, or be well established in amendment.
And there may be, there may be an opportunity for the second, for one of the parts of your motion after we do the second part of the presentation.
Yes, the second part of the presentation.
On the sites.
Where we're going to buy the land.
Yeah. It's on the site, it's specific to the site.
I think I've said it a couple of times, I'm not interested in buying that.
It's not mine. No, mine, it's about the site that we're going to choose. And so this is about the method on how to develop. The next will be about the site, and the site is more related to the school bus garage conversation.
Mr. Adams and Commissioner Simpson.
Go, Brad.
I guess, I guess my concern is that, I agree with Commissioner Rush, but what we're talking about is going ahead and building the infrastructure for a while in that quarter. It facilitates the need for the schools and the, the waste of a half million dollars under that bond package, and that can be accomplished within the timeframe. Now, can we accomplish this whole process during that timeframe? I understand we can't do that. But I'm talking about building the infrastructure that's going to allow this whole quarter, and my understanding is they've got to come across from where the pump station is going to be, and there will be potential 10 lots, commercial lots made available by the developers. In addition to the lots along Gold Mine, and which property we were talking about. So I think, yeah, we've got such a couple of issues. I think we need to facilitate infrastructure to allow for that pump station, and it will automatically create commercial sites available that we're, developers, I think, we need to participate in utilizing.
May I play up the motion a little bit? Mr. Simpson, how to come in.
I just, I think I struggle with the motion because I think it's a little premature. I would rather see the second part of the presentation, because if we don't have a developer agreement in place, if that's the direction, we don't even have a motions of board to proceed as a developer agreement. And we don't know if that developer, developer agreement is going to be agreed by all parties so that we can proceed. So I don't want to tie our hands in extending sewer, water and sewer to the bus garage until we get a little bit farther along in this process, or at least until we know which direction we want to go.
And I think the only concern I have there is that we've been told in the last, since November, that we were running out of time to do the bus garage. So I think by delaying it further than today, just to make sure that we do something today, make a decision one way or the other, because our staff keeps telling us that the time to be able to service the bus garage is slipping.
But I'm not willing personally to spend millions to run a water and sewer line across a piece of property until we know that we can truly develop that piece of property.
Well, we won't be developed.
Mr. Higgins. I agree and concur with Mr. Simpson. I personally think the economic future of the county is far greater than a bus garage for the schools. And while I appreciate that we want to provide sewer for the schools, I think we've got to look at the bigger picture. And I think before we can vote on your motion, I think we really need to decide what direction we're going with.
I would draw the motion before we go to the second part.
Before we get to the second part, Mr. Simpson, is that being done, would you like to go back to that previous slide?
Please.
I, I would move that we, as a board, approach the developer agreement method of moving forward with our economic development and our industrial part. Any discussion?
I don't understand what just happened. Are we going to hear the second part of the discussion or not?
My, my motion is strictly with regard to the type of method, not the specific location.
Direction first. This is the what, not the where.
Right. Okay. So we're going with the developer agreement, which means that we are going to work with a, work with developers, we're not purchasing the land.
Correct.
Correct?
Okay.
Further discussion, clarification? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. So to the where, is, we began this process of working at sites throughout the county back in, related to that from '15, and, and many departments were involved in that. As we look from a zoning perspective, from a service utility perspective, narrowed down to about nine locations. Of those four, sort of all to the top, one in the Marshall area, one in Wingate, northern central Union County, western central Union County. Marshall closed long-term for multiple reasons, mainly around infrastructure. The Wheaton area is closer near term, but still not, something we should be working on and looking at. But really for a short term, to really start this action is really those two sites. So the final two sites were chosen. One is emerged as the preferred site from a staff perspective, and that is the Gold Mine Generation Site. And really what we're talking about here is the bus garage located down here. This acreage is around 330 plus acres, 335 acres. Now, it's usable due to environmental, such as drainage areas, Bear Skin Creek is down here. So there's some, some things in there that will eat up some of the usable acreage, but it is a substantial piece of property. And a, and another area near Monroe Corporate Center, near the airport, has access of Rocky River Road. There's been a secured roadway system with Rocky River Road and 74 where the DOT listened to some requests from our office specifically about not doing a super street at that location, but doing a Michigan left so it maintained the north-south movement so that from this whole area you can get to the Monroe Expressway, throw out some kind of strange turns for the trucks so they can go straight through and get to the expressway exit. So looking at all of that, it's only about seven to eight miles from 485. It's just in a prime location for us. And so this is from a recommendation to you guys, as from a staff, as we, we think that this is the preferred site, given all of the sites that we moved through with the criteria that we indicated earlier. So looking at this site, we've talked about it, the cost, they've got 2.5 million in the sewer, but by the time we're done with it, with inflation coming on, we're going to assume about $3 million in sewer development cost. We'll need a master plan, we'll need to do environmental and geotechnical. There's again, doing site development, there's a lot of things under the ground that you just don't know about, so we need to find out what that is. Even for the roadway design, to know what kind of load bearing we have in the dirt. This has got Union County soil on it for sure, so it'll have some, some stuff that we'll have to remove. We'll need to do a wetlands delineation, there's definitely some wetlands on the site, need to know where that is again to determine that usable acreage. The topography survey, we know the north end has been leveled basically flat as a result of building the runway extension at the airport. So that, that site is in great shape to start. We need to negotiate that land price, there's a lot of factors going on to this, determine that maximum sales price that would incorporate the payback to the county for any infrastructure development, as well as to pay the landowner a reasonable price for his property, and then apply that developer at the time we didn't know. So then we'll apply the developer agreement method to that. So any discussions on the site? Is that, are we going in the right direction on the preferred site?
Yes, sir.
With the development site plan we just put, with the developer doing it, is that, are we assuming that we have to buy the land to do that developer, or do we work with developers in making that particular piece of property?
The latter, what's your say?
Yeah. The developer agreement in essence captures all of the aspects of what that relationship looks like.
So then necessarily we purchase the land? You keep referring to, like, we purchase the land.
No, I'm sorry if I'm just, okay, if I'm communicating that point. There are, there were methods that required us to buy the land, there's methods that don't require us to buy. We are, the developer method does not require us to acquire the land. It does require us to be a partner, and in the partner, we would have some cost, they would have some cost, and in that partnership. So it's a public-private partnership, it's just a more specific version of that, where they would be asked to develop components of the park.
Or be able to develop parts of the park.
Help me understand better, the, says down here, total waste water project costs 1.47 billion, and then it says 3 billion, so which is it?
Yeah, so the estimate, this is a pure estimate by staff, by Ed's team, to basically look at this, and there was a, here was the estimate, a 1.7. If there was a 20% cost savings, it was around 1.4. If there was a 40%, they're around 2.5 million dollars. I'm putting some inflation in that, some hedge for us, because things have gone up since this was established. We don't know what is going to be in the ground, we could hit rock, we could need a bore, there's other things that could add cost to that. So rather than giving you 2.5 and then I have to come back to you for additional, to, give you an expectation that it's 1.7 or 2.4, I'd rather give you an expectation that it's high and come in low, if we, if all things work out to our advantage. So that's the reason I'm throwing this number out based on this estimate. So I'm just pushing it up to cover some things. There's also, we haven't done the master plan, so we don't know the actual capacity for the pump station. So that's something that, once Ed's team gets all the site, the size of buildings and what we estimate the flow would be, then he can size the pump station. That may tweak this estimate. So that's what I was trying to capture with that, with the $3 million. So again, there's a lot of moving parts here, so it's, it's hard to nail things down at this, with the project, other than to give you some kind of bigger, bigger round numbers. And so that's what we're trying to do with the 3 million, so that you, you can do it with, I'd rather you have an idea of it being this and it committed at this, you know, a much, a much smaller number. Is that, that's how we've done the development in the corporate center, that's how we've done some other.
And we do know there's going to be some time associated with doing the geotechnical, developer agreement, et cetera, before the infrastructure goes in.
And just knowing this area the way we do, there is stuff in the ground, you know, they just can throw a development cost out away. And so we want to make sure that we've got a little bit of hedge in there so that what we bring to use is not a surprise.
Mr. Rushing, the funds for this come from the?
From water and sewer. They would come from water. Right. They would come for the force main, now this is a, now this is a force main.
Position.
They would come from water and sewer and then the way the developer agreement would be laid out is that if the county were to upfront those costs, then in the cost of the land as it were to be sold to developers, there would be a component that pays back the county for any of the costs that it has put into the project.
Like I was discussing earlier.
Yeah, exactly. And it's a, you know, simple math, you take the, the cost divided over the usable acres, apply that to each acre. So if there's 10 acres they bought, 10 acres worth of the sewer, that cost.
Mr. Simpson.
In the beginning, you had mentioned that 77% of projects have been lost because of a lack of a site.
Of the, of the lost projects.
The lost projects. What's our current hit rate on projects?
Oh, gosh. I mean, it's, where, I'm trying to remember now, just. I'd have to get back to you, but it's in the, you know, probably 15 projects that we've landed in the past 12 months, about 100 to, 65 to 100 projects that came through the office.
Okay. So north of 20%, 25% probably?
Yeah, which is higher than typically. Normally it's about 4%.
And the average size of those projects?
It's about $7, $8 million. Over history, our, our average project is about $7 and a half to $8 million.
And based on those numbers, if, if the product's available, our payback time will be five to seven years.
I would think so. That's probably decent estimate.
Again, that's assuming no recessions, no crazy, nothing unusual.
Yeah, I mean, crazy legislation. Something.
Now, I recall shortly after I was elected in 2010, taking a look at this property. And of course, we've been through some recessionary times at that point in time, and things were a little slow, and we're trying to get things going again. We made the decision to merge our economic development forces with the city of Monroe, who'd been successful in that area, with the airport and with their park. So I think we have the expertise certain. We've seen the Wingate study and we're in between a rock and a hard place with going to residential versus commercial industrial. So we're behind the eight ball as it stands. I think if you look at opportunities throughout the county with the infrastructure and the opportunities that are already there, this is just the most logical. So I would entertain a motion that we pursue this, this property and potential for a developer agreement with the ownership.
So.
Discussion. Eric Nunn?
I'll just say that friendly amendment, that we all say proceed with the infrastructure necessary.
What, what, what does that mean exactly?
Well, that, that property is useless until we put water sewer in, the water's there with sewer. We've got infrastructure on there, but actually we're rather us beyond this piece of property.
Before I entertain a friendly amendment, I would ask for some professional expertise from, from Ed or yourself in terms of, are those two, will they work together or would it be better to be separate motions?
I, I would think that they should be separate motions, because I think as the city forward with this, typically the next thing that you will see from staff is a task order for the geotechnical master plan, all of that to be done. That would, that would be the logical, correctly?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be the logical next step for us to bring to the board. Typically, we would not do the infrastructure until the developer agreement had been done.
And Rich, I would support that motion for the infrastructure, as long as the, the planning and everything else coincides, the developer agreement moving along. Because I agree, we, we need that on the property.
Yep.
So I think, in my view, if you allow the first motion to proceed, I'll support the second motion for the infrastructure, the timing to coincide with developer agreement process.
You're talking about the design separate?
Yes.
Okay. Can we vote on the first motion? Everybody clear on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who have no. Mr. Hammonds, you'd like to add to your other motion?
Second motion to proceed with the infrastructure to support the development of said property and, and the school bus garage needs as well.
Mr. Chilton, to clarify, is that a super voter, the design work on that piece of infrastructure? If not, I'd like to discuss, have a very big discussion with the board in close session.
I would ask Commissioner Hammonds if that's in tandem with his motion.
Well, I think I'd need to understand your concerns first before I give my time. I think.
We're at a pivotal point, and we're in a closed session.
The board can, yes, the board can recess to another room if the audience is in place, or we can?
Let's do that. I move that we recess to our board room at the front for the purpose of closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time we'll call a meeting back to order. Proceed, I believe we got a motion on the floor.
Yes, Mr. Simpson, based on, on information provided in the closed session, I would draw that motion.
So do we have board direction to proceed with the Gold Mine Generation Site? Did we already do that?
I think we passed the motion.
Okay, I apologize.
Anything further to Chris?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Yes. Well, actually, it is going to be over there, so. Mr. Gossi with Public Works has a number of presentations before you this afternoon. The first one being an overview of the Public Works budget. He then is going to go into the water and wastewater master plan. At that point in time, with the chair and the board's agreement, we would propose a short break. Then the second half of this presentation will be the water master plan, an overview of the Yakun Project, and then water line extension, if that's agreeable to the board.
You're in.
Ed?
It was, I'm going to go with the, we go through our presentations for the walk-through. The first aspect is really a budget workshop or session, a review really of the plant, the programs and services that the Public Works Department provides. The purpose of these budget work sessions is as we instruct them with the board to give you that overview, to give your feedback if there are areas that you have questions concerning, more information that you would like. We've broken it down basically around the funds within Public Works. And the reason for that is, is the board knows that water and wastewater monies cannot be used for solid waste, solid waste monies as a separate enterprise fund cannot be used for water and sewer, neither of those can be used for, for facilities management, they're all separate, separate programs. So we walked through that, and we talked about master plan, Yakun Water Line. So Public Works, along with most of the county, has gone through the strategic planning effort over the last couple of years and has developed a vision and mission statement. So our vision statement is specific to the entire department of Public Works and we are recognized for providing exemplary service to the engagement of our employees and the efficient and effective management of our assets and resources. So our, our vision is that we want to be seen by our customers, by the board, by our stakeholders as providing great service, doing it efficiently, doing it effectively, and managing the resources, whether it's the natural resources, personal resources, and the assets effectively. Our mission statements are specific to each of our businesses because those businesses are all very different. So this is the Public Works leadership team. Brooks is our community relations manager, Trish Berg is our, my executive assistant. They are not doing, everyone else is scattered in a room or their surrogates. So Scott Lee, that is director of engineering. Andy Neff is our director of water and wastewater operations. Aubrey Lofted is home with a sick baby and couldn't find any healthy babies of her, so she is not here today. John Evers is in the back, our solid waste division director. Shirley Anderson is our business operations director. She is also out here today. And sitting in for her is England Casco. And Michael James, if you didn't know, is sitting in as our interim facilities division director, who's been doing so for a number of months now. So just overview of the size of the budgets that we're dealing with, and this is obviously, this is just our expense size of, of the equation, but the water and wastewater program is $38 million a year, this is FY '17, actuals, in terms of kind of money we're spending each year on our water and sewer programs. Solid waste management, we need about $4.5 million, and facilities management, we need about $1.5 million. So these are sizable programs, particularly the water and wastewater fund, I mean, it's a sizable operation.
Is there revenues tied to that expenditure?
Yes, they're just about the ballpark of revenues, Jay. The revenue is on the water and sewer side of about $50 million. And, and I know, what are we doing with all that extra money? And the board will remember from our workshops on, on water and sewer rates, that we've been banking revenue over the last few years to fund our capital improvement program and we're not spending down that revenue. So in the last several years, we have generated some significant cash revenue that has been transferred directly to our. transferred directly to our capital improvement reserve fund. Solid waste management, we have a little over $5 million in revenue last year. And facilities essentially is a breakeven because it's an internal service fund, so it does not weigh that without profit or loss. So top words about the water and wastewater fund. We had a mission statement. The business statement is the same for all the business units. The mission of water and wastewater is pretty straightforward. It's to provide safe, reliable, palpable water to the customers of our system and to protect the environment through the collective, through the effective collection and treatment of wastewater produced by our customers. We're in a pretty simple business. Bottom line, our job is to get water to our customers that is safe and palpable to drink and to make sure that the wastewater they generate stays in the pipe and gets to our wastewater treatment plants where we can treat it environmentally, dispose it in the proper way. So it's a pretty straightforward mission. And what we've done then is go, okay, that's our mission. What are the things we need to do? What are the strategic objectives that we need to attain to be successful? And the first is that we need to demonstrate to our customers that we are efficient, effective, and responsive. Our customers, if they don't see us that way, we're not being successful. We need to demonstrate that we give students of the water resources that you can have. We spent a lot of time with it today, talking about new water supply program, $200 million effort. We need to be able to demonstrate that we're effectively using our water in order to be able to justify to our customers why we're spending money on new capacity. We need to reliably deliver those services through best practices, make sure we meet regulatory compliance. We need to protect the environment and public health through best practices in our wastewater collection and treatment. We need to make sure that we have capacity, both on the water and sewer side, that is available when and where needed within the framework of defined service boundaries and obviously board policy. And we need to identify the fiscal resources necessary to support these programs, agreed upon level of service, and effectively manage the operations within those budgets. So we recognize that it's not an open purse that we're dealing with. We have waves that impact all of our customers and we need to work efficiently in that regard. And second, we need to develop and maintain a highly engaged workforce. We can't do anything without our people, our people who are in our organizations. And we need to do that through shared value, clarity of purpose, skills development, knowledge retention, and training. So when we're talking just about our wastewater fund, this is how our budget is structured. So we have a very detailed budget structure as we start developing this budget. It was developed, you know, first around our divisions, which are the major operations. We actually do the budget from the bottom up and feed up this way. But our budget is managed by not only our division directors, but each of our business units within those divisions. So within water and wastewater operations, we have an admin and regulatory compliance group, field services, that's managing all of our pipelines, wastewater collection and repairs, our east regional transmission system, our wastewater operation, and our water distribution system. In general, we have new development, capital improvements, and also doing some facility CIP. We have a planning group. And in our business operations, we have some general administration, customer service and billing, which is our folks that deal with all of our customers' day-to-day visits, and our own fiscal management group. Some idea of the magnitude of those dollars has a breakdown between those groups. Our biggest is water and wastewater operations. So as you probably can see, we're spending more and more money operating our facilities, providing that direct service. Engineering is about $1.8 million. And that does not include the capital costs. That is just the internal cost of managing those projects and programs. It's not the capital cost that's in there. Planning resource management, our planning group. Business operations looks like this huge number. And I'll explain that a little bit later about what's in that, that no, we do not have a 40% overhead. So all be efficient and effective in what we do. We try to put together a few metrics of the budget and what our expenses have looked like over time and how they've grown. And that's based on the direct request we got from the board in some of the earlier workshops. You said, you want to see some trends and some metrics as to what we've done. So the gray dot area in the background is relative to the number of customers that we serve. And you see, from FY '13 through FY '17, we've grown from about 42,000 customers, approaching 48,000, 40, actually, in FY '18, we're exceeding that. And the blue line is our operating budget. So our operating budget has absolutely grown over that time from about, and this is slightly different than what you're seeing before. This takes out all the one-time expenses and the capital expenses. So this is just looking at what we're spending on day-to-day operations in the water and wastewater program. So we've grown over those years also from some $18 million to about $24 million in direct operating expenses. But that trend is parallel in our trending growth. So we think, when you look at the slope curves on how we're growing as an organization, and the customers we're growing, and how we're growing in our expenses, they're, we have some additional metrics. We'll show you on that. So one of the things we look at is how many customers are we serving by each staff member? And this is a metric that is used in the water and wastewater industry. And what the dash lines are, the graph, and I'll get him to explain the details of it, is if we went to, I'm not the Water Works Association, who's been doing benchmarking in utility industry for some 15, close to 20 years now. And what the red line is, is for this metric, which is the number of customers you serve for full-time deployment complaints that you have, they looked and surveyed the industry and came up with, well, the top 25 utilities are up in that green line. They're serving 600, 700 customers per employee. And the lower the title, the bottom 25, we're dealing with about 300 to about 400 customers per employee. And you can see, we're better, we're better than the bottom 25, but we don't excel in this parameter. So we're okay, but we're not, we're not best in class. The curve, I like to point out though, is the flatness of that line. So we are not growing our staff any more than the number of customers we serve. So our ratio between the number of customers that are coming online and the growth in our staff is the same. And what the gray dot area in the background is, is our staffing numbers over those years. So in 2004, we had just over 100. We went up to close to 115 in 2008 with the recession. We had a significant reduction in staff. In 2012, we started growing some of that staff back up as we saw the growth in our utility growing. So we're in the middle range here. We're not best in class on staffing, but we're in the middle range. We're not, we're not the worst, we're not the best. Another way we look at this also now is to look at, what's the total cost of our operation for water per customer? And how do you compare there? And when we look at that metric, we are best in class. So again, this is a little bit flipped from the previous one. The lower the number, the better. You know, the lower the cost per customer you serve, the better you are. So the best 25% of the utilities in the country are down around $300. We're down around $200, $250. So it's costing us $250 per customer to serve that customer, where the 75% of the utilities in the country are in that $600 range. So in this case, when you look at our total cost, we are very efficient in what we're doing. And this is the same metric applied to our number of wastewater accounts and putting it out that way. So we think we're showing that we are effective, are efficient in what we're doing. We're best in class on both water and wastewater when you look at cost per customer. And we're in the middle of the pack when you look at the number of staff that we're employing. So the programs within water and wastewater, and we gave you some discussion of what each of these are. It's just kind of the relative numbers. Again, business operations, I'll explain that $17 million a minute. But within water and wastewater operations, we have admin at that 380. Regulatory compliance is essentially one person way down. It's one of our initiatives we'll talk about. Field services is a big bulk of our operation. These are the guys that are maintaining our wastewater collection system and also doing some support on water line repair. The east regional transmission system, that's a separate operation. Wastewater treatment plants is $5.3 million. Our water distribution, another big dollar amount in terms of $7.8 million, including our, that also includes our purchased water in that number. Engineering, $1.8 million. Planning and resource management, $500,000.
You use a lot of consultants. Where is, where do they follow?
The consultants were, to the extent the consultants are working on a capital project, they're assigned to the CIP and their dollars go right against that capital project. If they're doing support work internally, then they're within those funds. But the big dollars are all on the CIP side. And that's where most of our consultant dollars is spent. So again, just a quick recap of what those operating expenses, and again, these are just straight operating expenses, not debt, not internal service funds. And that's why these numbers, those are the dollars that my people can actually control. So I can't control the internal service noncharges. I can't control debt directly. But these are the costs that my managers are working with on a day-to-day basis that they're trying to manage. Kind of just running through some of those. So field services, talk a little bit, who they are and what they do. And this is the part I really want to talk more about because I think the board doesn't get to hear enough about, you know, the guys literally in the train doing the work. So the strategic objectives that apply to that is, you know, safe delivery, a pillable water to all of our customers, and protecting the environment through best practices in wastewater collection and treatment. So these guys are the ones that are maintaining water and wastewater services by conducting emergency routine repair to infrastructure, installing new domestic water sewer taps and irrigation, cleaning and inspecting wastewater tanks, preventing builds up, that need to back up, others spills, maintaining and inspecting our sanitary sewer easements. So we have to maintain the easements that run through the building roofs that aren't in people's backyards, make sure trees don't grow up and extirpating root intrusion into our lives. We operate and maintain some 69 wastewater list stations to ensure compliance. And we provide utility relocate for when anyone is developing or doing any work with our easement or water light abras, we're willing utilities that have to go out there and mark those lines. So they hopefully now spectrum does not run their cables through our water pipelines. Has been known to happen periodically. So one of the measures of effectiveness we use is same kind of sewer overflows. Instead, our basic objective in wastewater collection is keep sewer in the pipe. That's the job. It's got to stay in the pipe all the treatment plant. And that doesn't always happen. And the method we use that is how many overflows did we have per 100 miles of pipe? And the industry standards are the best in class are down around one. You know, 75% of the industry is staying within seven. And you can see, back in 2007, we were having challenges. We've done a lot of work. We really brought that number down. We had a bad year in 2016 with some serious rainfall that created some serious challenges for us. We've corrected those situations. And in '17, '18, that number's back down. So this is one of those effectiveness measures that we use on the wastewater side. You go, are we keeping sewer in the pipe or are we doing what we need to do? And the work we do in terms of inspection, cleaning, manhole maintenance, infiltration, inflow correction, that's all driven to this basic goal of make sure the sewer stays in the pipe and it doesn't overflow, doesn't get into groundwater. Wastewater operations did protect public health and through best practices in our collection and treatment. Board knows we operate five wastewater treatment facilities throughout the county, two major ones and three package treatment plants. We manage a biosol as land application where all the biosols generated in those facilities are applied as a beneficial use on farm lines, mostly in South Carolina, some of the Indian County. We operate the east regional wastewater transmission system as part of that regional program. And we administer wastewater service agreements with Charlotte and Monroe, who provide service to some of our service areas. And I'll show the board where that is now. Our 12-mile creek facility is located in this area. And essentially, everything in blue flows to our 12-mile creek facility. It's our largest plant. It's on the construction now. The six-mile creek basin, a little bit of tar hill, are pumped over to Charlotte through that service agreement that I was mentioning. And Charlotte treats that wastewater for us. The east side system is currently served by the City of Monroe through that service agreement. And our plan, which we'll talk about soon, is to build a new wastewater facility that will serve all of this area. And that's actually the wrong slide, wrong map. So I apologize for that. That's the future map. It's only 137 slides and I thought I had them all right yesterday.
Right now, we only have six, seven million gallons a day at 12-mile creek.
12-mile creek is 6 million gallons per day. And it is on the construction to go to 7.5 with one facility is actually being programmed to take it right to nine.
And eventually it'll go more than twice.
Eventually it'll go to 15. And what brings, right now, this area is served by the Poplin River pump station that comes over this way. That will go to this new facility, but the growth in this area, in this area, as that develops, will come over. So our wastewater flows continue to grow through 2017. 17 was a dry year. And our flows diminished a little bit. You will see both in our wastewater flows and our water peak demand on water are very weather dependent. Our compliance rate in our wastewater deployment tops 99%. So we do several thousand tests per year in terms of environmental compliance. Dozens of tests that need to be done daily, some weekly, some monthly. And the overall compliance rate right now is running about 99.8%. So our goal obviously is 100%, but you know, we do a really good job in keeping those treatment plants in compliance. Water distribution, probably the area that most people see from our operation is getting water to their home. And their job is to, you know, distribute water safely throughout Indian County, maintaining and monitoring the water system of tanks, boost of pump stations, and other purposes. And we'll talk when we get to the act department, just how that water is moving through the county and be able to show the board some dynamo graphs or how we actually move that water. So we have some, Scott, help me, six questions in?
Yes.
Six questions in, I guess correctly. Each one served by an elevated water tank. Each one served, each of those tanks being served by a major pump station. Keeping all that water moving, keeping it balanced, is the job of our water distribution section. We manage our water, our lost water reduction program. Lost water is a big issue in the utility systems. Any water that we produce that we don't deliver for is monthly lost. And I'll show you back later on just how we're doing on that. Monitor tests, we report water quality for compliance on a regular basis. And obviously, we have, again, the standards that we do on a weekly basis, quarterly basis, monthly basis, annual basis on water quality, depending on the issue, some on a daily basis. Respond to customer questions, concerns, complaints related to water quality, our distribution system service. Maintain all of our assets. And we maintain some 50,000 meters that we have out there that we have to read every month. You know, we have some 44,000 customers. We have over 51,000 meters because a lot of our customers, we have dual meters. We have an irrigation meter and a regular meter. We also have meters that are inactive that we still have to check on. So total water supply, you can see since 2013, as the economy has improved, our total water production, this is our peak date, this is total gallons per year, has continued to go up pretty steadily. So water loss, I'm not ashamed to put up graphs. I'm not terribly proud of it. So back in 2010, 2011, we were thinking we were doing really pretty good. The industry norm, if there is such a thing, is about 15%. If you're in that 15% range of lost water, you're acceptable. You're not good, but you're acceptable. If you're down to 10, you're excellent. If you're over 15%, you're really putting money on the ground. So we were doing really well. Not sure what happened here. We corrected a billing issue here that was not, it was billing correctly, but it was accounting for the gouging incorrectly. So it had to do with how the initial meeting or meeting was set up. And don't ask me to explain details today. But it was an error that created, understated the amount of water we sold. Even though we billed correct amount, when we totaled it all up in our billing system, it understated the amount. So we showed a lot of lost water. And that's part of what I want the board to realize is that some of this could be just in our-- in our data. This is not necessarily water on the ground, this could be data issues. So we corrected a data issue there, brought us back down to normalize. We're not sure what causes what in that year. We started an aggressive program in identifying interconnects and leak protection and brought this number back down, but this is a challenging, challenging area. We're one of the lead organizations in the region in terms of having good data, in terms of what we're doing, what, where the losses are. A lot of our data says we're in pretty good shape, and our numbers weigh down, down around 13%, say we're in good shape, but those anomalies really bother us, and we're spending a lot of time, and that's already in our plan, and this is group going with Amy and our operations, really looking at focusing on these issues and having to make sure we maintain that number.
What percentage of that loss is through allowable leakage versus maintenance issues?
The, that's part of this whole water audit that we go through where we try to ascertain how much of this, based upon how we collect information, what is, what's the estimate of what's data-driven, what's actual leakage, what's just lost? Can we have that for you, Kevin? I'll get that for you.
Are there any lines that you're having ongoing maintenance issues because of their age or materiality?
Amy, can you answer that? Not that I'm aware of that, it's a particular issue in terms of lost water, but please.
The only line that we seem to have problems with commissioners, the one near Airport Route, there's a leak there, we've been after that. We've done some testing, but that's a mystery we're still working on, get that under control. But normally, when there's a break, we immediately respond, we get it repaired, we estimate the loss, I mean, it goes into the calculation, but that's the only area I think that's still a mystery to us that we're working on.
Thank you.
Chipping the program, so I jumped over to now to the Engineering Division, I'm just going to spend very much time on this. By the way, that is our reservoir audit in charge, and the photo doesn't do it justice until you realize that this is one huge giant backhoe back there. So when you blow that photo off and look at it, you realize just the magnitude of the size of that excavation for this reservoir. And really, the only other point out to the board on this is the size of our capital improvement program. This is an encumbrance amount, and I'd actually rather show you a cash flow, I just didn't have that available right now for future years. But we've gone from encumbrance in 2014, it's now 25 million, and as we get to that point in 19 with the Atkins Project, we're going to be looking at encumbering $120 million either after another $100 million. So we're making big time capital improvement. If I took this back further in '09, '10, '11, our spend rate was in the order of $7 to $8 million a year only. Our spend rate right now in terms of cash out, I think is in the order of $20, $30 million a year in terms of our capital program. So with our master plan, with implementation of these plans, we are spending a lot of money on capital to assure that capacity, ensure the reliability.
Like you said, it's a significant project, but you explain a little bit what it's, what will benefit because, and that's going to be our emergency water.
I've got the whole section just on the project launch, and then we're going to get to the whole Atkins Project and reduce the line district. So the reservoir, I'm sorry, the reservoir itself, the reservoir project was, is a $35 million project, our construction toll of about $40 million worth of mitigation, and what the reservoir project does is really is a drop buffer for us. Right now, we've got three days of storage on site, and if anybody goes onto the river, which we had happen about two years ago now, where we had a accident down the bridge on South Carolina 5 going over the Catawba, which is upstream of our water intake, we had diesel fuel spill into the river, we had to get off the river. So we were only going to get off the river for a little bit, we had to get off the river for an extended period of time due to drought, serious contamination, this gives us that buffer to be able to operate our storage, this will give us about 30 days storage on the treatment plant.
The town has more prepared today?
Developer, a big part of what we do in Engineering is manage all the developer contributed projects that come into us, and this graph takes us all the way back to '03 because I just love the, but I haven't really get how the engineering staff and operations staff dealt with that growth level in '05 and '06, it was, I'm glad I wasn't here then. So we were really giving at that point, you know, $25 million a year in contributed capital from developers, and the boss here, the areas of miles of pipe that are being contributed each year by new development. So this is when folks in community go, gee, those developers are allowed to do all the stuff, and we're giving all of our work to new development, they don't have to pay a dime, here's what they're paying. So each year, developers are paying for that infrastructure, contributing that infrastructure to us at no cost as well as paying capacity fees. So the value of our infrastructure, right now, we're bringing in about $12 million a year this year in donated capital, and it's some, you know, 40, close to 40 miles of water wastewater pipeline that are being contributed. So this is where the growth in our pipeline system comes from, it's the work that the department is putting in, we are not spending a lot of our money on water line liberalized.
When did we expand to six million gallons at 12 Mile Creek?
That would have been in '08, '09? '09?
And it was, and we had a lot of the demand, and then finally we started taking care of that demand. You know, why such a drastic change in '09, '10?
That was the recession, when the recession hit in '08, you saw some projects finish out, and then nothing started until '12 again. So we just had a huge economic downturn in '08, the market fell apart in new development, and levels started picking back up in '12, and then you see the takeoff back from there, basically not back to the levels we saw, but, you know, we're back to '03 levels at this point. Business operations. Three elements I included there is the general administration, this is where my budget gets skewed, because what's included in their budget, just because we don't allocate it out to the rest of the operations, is internal charges from within the county, so all of the internal charges for administration, for human resources, for procurement, for IT is in there, all of our debt service, so the debt on all that capital improvement is housed in this budget, and all of those transfers to reserves, all the net revenue shows as an expense here, and then goes in, becomes a revenue into reserve. So that $10 million net revenue this year was in that budget, one with the other transfer. So it's the way it shows in the budget, I don't want to net it out, but now our overhead's pretty low. One of the metrics we did put together on our customer service, again, in terms of efficiency, again, green dotted lines being good, that's the best 25% of the utilities, 75 red line is where 75% of the utilities lie, and this is the number of calls on an annual basis taken by each of our customer service representatives, customer service specialists. Each of our specialists handles 7,000 calls a year. It is just a huge number, you can see, yeah, they're handling more calls than almost anyone in the industry. So even though the gray in the background is our staff, we've added staff in '17 and '18, even with that, we brought the curve down, but, you know, we're a pretty efficient leading organization, and I'm really proud of the work that group does. So what are some of the new initiatives we're working on, and that the board will see pieces and parts of in the new budget, hopefully? Obviously, the water management facilities operation back in house is one of our major initiatives, and we're moving forward with that. The actual date will be July 2nd, by contract and never putting together, walking that date down, we're working very closely with Charlotte, very well with Charlotte, on how to make that staff transition very smooth and very effective. We're into our third, fourth year on asset management approach to infrastructure management. This organization, as unfortunately many utilities and many government organizations around the country, used to operate on, you know, when it breaks, you fix that, and if it doesn't break, you worry about the next thing and you fix that, and we've been moving to much more adaptive approach, not only focusing on preventive maintenance and predictive maintenance, but really looking at which of our assets are most critical to our operation, which are in the best condition, which are in the worst conditions, and doing much more programmatic focus on how we spend our maintenance dollars. So in the last two years, we've now put these programs in place for our pipelines, our both wastewater and water. This year, we're moving into some of our pump stations, and you'll see on the facility side, we're also taking the same system, software we've implemented, and I'm looking to implement that on the facilities management side of the department also. Scale is supervised with control and data acquisition, and what that is, is our telemetry and computer monitoring system that really monitors everything that goes on in our water and our wastewater system. So our system is about 15 years old at least at this point, it is time for an upgrade, we're using proprietary software and hardware right now. So we're just finishing up a master plan this year that is identifying, how do we move forward with the upgrade of that system in a planned, programmatic way that we can afford to do and keep our system upgraded? I mean, right now, people are going, we can control our entire water distribution system if you have the access codes and the security through a laptop computer, and our guys on call do that, so when there's an alarm system, on off hours, they get a line, it goes to them, they pull up their laptop, they can diagnose where the problem is, in some extent, they can control that and mitigate it, or send crews out to be able to deal with it, while your technology is getting very dated, and we're looking to upgrade that. This appears protection of our sewer collection system, that's at the regulatory group. Right now, we have, we started a program about two years ago, focusing mostly on restaurants, and if you're a customer of ours, you've probably gotten your flyers in the mail, seen them on the website, all about fog, fats, oils, and grease, and you shouldn't throw that down the sewer system. And that was a good first start in dealing with restaurants, dealing with our residential customers, having disposal of that properly, but we really need to start getting into the industrial base a little more assertively in terms of what our industry is putting into our sewer system, and I think it ties to the board's initiative of how do we get more industry in here, so we're looking to beef up that program a little bit. We've always been just under the point where we had to implement a mandated program, we did not have enough industry in our system to require us to go through that next level of anything other than monitoring. We're starting to cross over that threshold, so we're trying to get ahead of that. And water conservation, you'll see an aggressive move on water conservation this, starting this March. We did a lot of education last summer, this spring, we're going to do more education, and our water sewer rate structure provides for enforcement on that, and our concern is that we need to really start educating our customer base when we need to get into some enforcement, really is a way to make sure our customers understand the importance of water conservation and keeping those peak flows down and keeping our usage down. So those are the initiatives we drove, what we see being driven by our customers is one is the need to look at automatic metering initiative, and right now, what we're using for all of our water meters, we use a technology called AMR Automatic Meter Reading, and what that technology is, on each of our meters, we have a device that collects the reading, stores it, and when we drive by in a specially equipped truck with telemetry on it, it pulls that meter and grabs the data. And so it's not real time, it's when we drive by, which typically is once a month to create a bill. The way the industry is going, both in the water industry and the power industry, is to real-time continuous monitoring of water meters. And that's what this automatic metering initiative is, is to take that technology, we're collecting this data, and instead of just paying it out once a month, you can pay it continuously and be able to record that data. And what that does is will provide us much more information on that lost water graph, where's our water really going on a real-time basis, and has it been utilized, and where is it being utilized? But it provides customer real information, one of the biggest challenges we have is customers coming into us, I've got a $500 bill this month, I have a leak out there, what are you going to do about it? And I want credit, and you can't even believe this without the money. This will tell us if they have a leak before they know they have a leak, because we'll be continuously monitoring. This is not inexpensive, we're talking 10, 15 million dollars probably, we're into a master plan on that, and another part of our challenge going forward is how do we implement this over a four, five-year period? How do we afford this program, how do we keep it effective? But it is one of the new initiatives out there in the marketplace. Obviously, one of the other initiatives, and we'll be talking about later, short line extension program, and how do we update that program, what's the direction of the board in terms of how we move that to a more service program. So that concludes water and wastewater. We still have solid waste in facility, and we're much short, but if there were a jump into many of these particular questions, we'll roll the wastewater program.
Thanks, Jim. If one thing that you had in your strategic objectives was to distribute safe drinking water throughout Union County, you know, that's something that, you know, since I was elected to the board in 2002, I can tell you that, you know, even though there's been disagreements on boards of commissioners in the past, one thing I've always heard from commissioners is that we want to make sure that we can do everything we can to get people water. You know, that was the intention of a lot of folks, Speaker Commissioner Johnson, former Commissioner Balkam, Alan Balkam, you know, there's always been an intention that we do something to help provide water throughout the county. And I know when we talk about the Atkins supply later on, too, I'll save a lot of that for then. But, you know, we have the short line extension program, we're going to talk about, you know, back when we didn't, self-help program, there were people who took water to very remote areas at great expense just to be able to get and hook in the county water. So, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's tough being in our position sometimes, because I look at it as, am I serving the citizens of the county, or am I working for Public Works for this hour, to be, we're going to be talking, and that's the challenge is, what do we do to help the citizens of Union County, not just the customers of Union County Public Works? So I look forward to your presentation on the Atkins.
Okay, Bill, tell us a minute. Your AMI initiative that you have, does that include meter changeouts? Do you have a timeline on that?
We don't yet, we have a plan that's being developed by our consultant right now that we should have within the next two months to be able to incorporate into a budget, a budget plan to bring to you, but we're looking at a multi-year, our challenge right now, what we want to get to is, we've got certain technology we're using, we want to continue to invest in that technology if it's not the right technology. So it could include meter changeout, or it could include just the electronics changeout, and that's what we want to get to, is we're going to be, how do we change course now for where we want to be in the future and not just keep going along this path if we can't afford $10 million electronic? Solid Waste Management, again, our vision is the same for all of our departments, all of our service areas, but our mission in solid waste is to provide convenient, equitable, environmentally compliant facilities for the disposal of recycling, municipal and commercial waste generated within the county. That's the commercial side, where the haulers go, and also to be a resource in municipalities of the county, establish effective collection programs that promote resource recovery and efficient operations. So we're doing both here, we've got a collection side of our collection sites, and we have a commercial side. Strategic objectives are pretty similar to the water wastewater side, I'm likely demonstrate that we're efficient and effective, protect the environment through providing opportunities for facilities for proper disposal, provide opportunities for reuse of solid waste and recycled materials, so one of our goals is try to find those markets. Your waste combos is an initiative we started a year ago to try to move that forward. We need to ensure that sufficient disposal capacity is available, we need to identify physical resources, how do we pay for this, this is an enterprise fund, we do not use tax dollars to pay for this program, so we are running a business that, and need to run it that way, and we need to develop our workforce again to share values and clarity of purpose. In terms of our budget structure, a little more simpler, we basically have solid waste disposal and solid waste collection, we do have all of those programs underneath each of those, you can see the big dollars in our solid waste disposal program, our collections are essentially the seven convenient sites that we operate around the county, and we'll get into a little discussion on these. So what we provide, again, we operate a municipal solid waste transfer station, so all the waste, the garbage, the municipal solid waste that's collected- So all the waste, the garbage, the municipal solid waste that's collected within the county, most of it is coming to our facility. We do not, we cannot control where the solid waste goes to. So we have a garbage hauler in Marshville, outside of, well, Marshville, there's our program. So garbage collector in area of corporate outside of Marshville takes out garbage, they essentially can go wherever they want with it. They can bring it to our trash transfer station, they can bring it to our landfill in Anson, they can bring it to the landfill up in Cabarrus. It is market-driven what they want to do. So our transfer station needs to be competitive in marketplace because we cannot mandate that anyone come there. So we're running a very competitive business. We also operate construction and demolition debris in landfill. And that, again, operates in open competitive markets. So our works need to be competitive enough to make sure that waste stream is coming there because there are options. A year ago, we started a potash yard waste composting and recycling facility. We provide for recycling liquids, electronics, waste tires, along with a bunch of other miscellaneous used oils, waste oils, oil filters. And I'm trying to remember what the other liquid might be of other recyclables that we deal with. And we operate seven convenience sites for our residential garbage disposal and recyclables disposal. That includes one at the solid waste management facility site. So where do we make money, where do we lose money on these programs? Because overall, we're, again, we're an enterprise fund, we need to operate in the black, not in the red. And our, as the board can see, our construction demolition program, and this is called adjusted revenue, adjusted expense, because what we've done is we looked at, administered over at, and we've allocated those costs out across those programs. And we looked at some of the internal revenue and allocated those to the appropriate programs to capture as a business which elements of our business are making money, which are losing money. And we've been doing this for about six or seven, six or seven years now that we've been running through these numbers.
Yeah, where's your compost in Pauling?
The compost is falling on the recycling right now. And it's not making a lot of progress yet, so we need to get more aggressive. Well, if it is a good product, we need to get the marketing up and going. So C and D landfill, parentheses is good, that means that's revenue, that's net revenue. So when we bring in a million dollars, our adjusted expense is half a million, so we made a half million dollars last year. MSW, that is the transfer station, we made some $800,000 last year. Recycling, we're still losing money and probably always will. It's just the nature of the business that the market for recyclables are at all-time levels. It's at the point now where glass is considered a waste product by some of the material handlers and don't actually even want it in the waste stream. So it is a fundamentally correct thing to be doing, but it's not a money maker for us, which is why we need to make money here to pay for those other programs that are needed. Piedmont community need a way to get rid of all computers and TVs, and even we'd get rid of their used oil. We need a way to recycle liquids, we need a way to deal with these other waste products that do not go in landfills by law, cannot go in landfills, cannot go into trash transfer stations. So the county is in the position of providing this service. And it's part of our challenge because our competitors that operate other landfills, they don't have to provide this service. So we're competing with other landfills, and you go, I don't want any of that stuff. You go to county with that, we don't want, we don't want to use oil, liquids, refrigerators, because they can't make money on them. Our convenience sites are finally breaking even and making a little bit money. And I've got a graph to show you how this progressed over the years. The board over the last seven years has gone through two stages of weight increases on those sites. And it's really got us to a point where it is a self-sustaining operation at this time. This is the best we have done in years. When I started seven years ago, that number was minus $300,000. So the solid waste firm back in 10 and 11 was losing money and having to dip into reserves to pay operating expenses. So we turned it around, and about four years ago, we finally started turning a break even. And this year, quite honestly, we were surprised, and you'll see the growth in construction demolition debris. This number surprised us, that it's really grown well, and it's really, efforts of our solid waste staff are really working with that market. So bottom line, we're doing very well on solid waste right now, can actually start putting money back into reserve. Before you get too anxious about you, we've got too much money. We're replacing a single...
Compactor.
Compactor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
It is about a half a million dollars. So these are not inexpensive. A front-end loader that we use in the transfer stations, about $300,000. So very expensive piece of equipment, so we're finally starting to build a reserve back to be able to fund future replacement and expansions. This will take you all the way back to July 10 in terms of the tonnage that we do bring in. You can see it's pretty variable by month. Again, we're in a very competitive environment. This is our municipal solid waste. And this bar is what we budgeted each of those fiscal years. That was our assumption as to how much waste we'd get in. And didn't do so well this year, so we dropped it down and beat projections. These last two years, we've been pretty much right on with the tonnage. And we need to be right about at this level to break even, at 6,000 tons. So if we're bringing in more than 6,000 tons per month, that is, we're making money. If we're bringing in less, we start getting a little hippy. You can see the C and D waste really took off in 2015, started growing. And this was concerted effort that two-year period of reaching out to the industry. The board approved a declining block rate structure that said, if you bring me more than this, pre-year, we'll give you a discount. And that's the effect. It really shot it up. And as you saw in the previous numbers, we reduced our rate, we're bringing in more tonnage, and we're making more money with a lower rate. So it really shows the supply and demand dynamics that take place in this business. Our convenience sites, I think the board is pretty familiar with these. Parkwood, Offield, Offfield Bill, White Store, the site on Austin-Channing Road at the landfill, New Salem, Piedmont, and Sun Valley. A couple of these sites individually make money, most of them actually lose money, and in the aggregate, we're just above, made about 10% last year for the first time. So they're doing pretty well. One of our initiatives we'll talk about is Sun Valley, and the challenge we have there. I wanted to point out, as I mentioned, the board approved a couple of rate changes to the bag fee at the sites over the last several years. And you can see this is the tonnage we brought in in blue. This is the total tonnage for all the sites. And it dropped when we implemented a rate change back in '12. And it dropped again in '13, '14, when we implemented another rate. Our revenue, meanwhile, went up. And our revenue went up to the point where we were now breaking even. Because back here is when we were losing $300,000 a year on this operation, which means that operation is being, was being supplemented by people who use curbside collection. So now we have an even keel set up where we're not subsidizing this operation. This big jump here in the last year is when we changed our operation of the convenience site at the landfill property, where we created a separate site, our customers come in, all the trailers that we get and pickup trucks on Saturdays, that tonnage used to be included as landfill tonnage, not as convenience site tonnage. I'm now collecting it as convenience site tonnage. So it's kind of an artificial bump on this number, but it is what's resulted in both the tonnage coming up and the revenue coming up. And it's what accounted for really showing the profit this year for the first time on those sites. So major initiatives. Sun Valley Convenience Site, the board of education said, hey, we're renovating our Sun Valley High School because some voters decided to give them money as part of a bond issue. So they're in the process of looking at renovations of the school. One of the things they've asked us is to abandon that site because of the need for facility expansion. So we're in the process of looking at, we've identified about four potential sites in that general area of the county that might be workable. We're under evaluation. Two of those sites are owned by the school system, one is owned by Public Works. So we're looking at those now, and trying to identify the best site we're able to bring that back and figure out how to make that work. And we are looking at enhancing our marketing for compost, where we've got a good product, and, you know, we need to get out there and start marketing that to the nursery industry and other green industry to make use of it. Questions, concerns on solid waste program? Based on volume, how does Sun Valley fall among the other sites? Is it higher or lower volume? Sun Valley is one of the higher volumes. What's interesting with Sun Valley, and John correctly, I think Sun Valley, the percentage of recyclables is equal to the, on a tonnage basis, is almost equal to the amount of garbage we bring in?
Yes, sir. The recycling rate's almost 40% there, so a lot of recyclables, it's the fourth highest overall of the seven sites, sir.
So it's different from the other sites where on the other sites, the recyclables make up maybe 20% of the waste stream coming in. Here, and you notice, it's in Indian Trail, it's in a more suburban area. So our supposition is that a lot of folks use it really as a recycling center on those trash disposal because they already have curbside.
In interest of time, because I see what time it is now, can we skip ahead to the water supply master plan? Just to, so we'll make sure we have more time to discuss those things. I'm sure facilities management's going to be fascinating.
About three slides on facilities management.
But if we could move ahead and then come back to those maybe at the end, make sure we have time.
They haven't covered it all, sir.
Everybody cover that? Sure.
Should I ask about how long, so I can see if anyone needs a break now?
We're not even halfway through.
I know we're not.
So I'm good for a while. 30, 5:30 break?
Okay.
Sounds good.
So the board's, some of the board members requested that we provide some additional information on reporting the wastewater master plan. We'll go back to the wastewater master plan. What we've done is pull up the presentation we made to board at the workshop back in April of last year on the master plan, and then updated that and provided some additional So the purpose, you know, we did our original master plan back in 2011. And the purpose of updating the master, of this presentation was to identify for the board the changes to our capital improvement program, the changes in direction that took place since 2011, and be able to identify what those costs were. Just as a framework, and we'll get into a lot more detail on the Yakin, but our whole water capital program is driven around our IBT. And just a quick intro. This green as brown line that runs through the county here is the separation between the Catawba River Basin and the Yakin River Basin. And any water that crosses over this boundary is considered an inter basin transfer and is regulated by the state. And we're limited to 5 million gallons per day, as our grandfather meant, that we can bring across this line from Catawba to serve within the Yakin Basin. And that is a real driver in our overall water supply planning is that even expanding Catawba doesn't meet our need because as the county continues to grow, in this part of the county, in particular with the Monroe Expressway, we're limited by this 5 million gallons, how much water we could bring in. And that's what identified the need for building a new supply off the Yakin River to bring water in to meet, meaning on that side of the county. So the 2011 master plan assumed that we would partner with Anson County to meet future Yakin needs. It actually proposed going back to the state, trying to increase our grandfather IBT from 5 million to 10. It provided for a short-term expansion of Catawba Water Treatment Plant in 2017. The plan assumed that we would increase our purchased water amount up to 6 million gallons a day from Anson, as well as then build a new or expanded Anson facility. And water distribution system improvements were really not well detailed in that program in 2011 because we weren't sure if we're getting more from Anson County or not when the plan was adopted. So what changed? Thankfully, our demand went down from 2011 to 2015. So our per capita consumption decreased, our peak demand decreased, and growth took off a little slower than we anticipated. When we did the plan in 2010 is when we were looking at the data, if you remember that growth curve, we were pretty flat in development, 10, 11, 12. We anticipated that the economy would have rebounded in 11. It did, it didn't rebound on this 13. So that helped us and bought us time in terms of moving forward. At that time, Anson, you know, in 2012, we realized Anson was not a willing partner, and we focused our attention to Norwood and entered into agreement with Norwood, and the board had a decision that we would not try to see an increase in our IBT on the Catawba plant. That was just a very difficult political environmental hurdle to go over, we would not do that, so we would leave the Catawba at five, which says, even more so, we need a new supply off Yakin because we can't expand the Catawba much further. So again, this was the original master plan, this is the red line in terms of what we assume the growth would be. The blue dots are our actual peak day demands. This is our latest projection, and we bought a little bit of time in that regard. The Catawba permitting stall, we were trying to get it online by 2017, and it was tied around the permitting for the reservoir. So that got delayed. We have leased additional capacity from our partner in Lancaster to meet our short-term needs. So even though we own half of the plant, we have leased another piece of that plant from Lancaster to be able to use that until we get more capacity onboard. Lancaster has also secured additional capacity from Charlotte. So Lancaster this year, this year, I think, or maybe early, late last year, entered into an agreement with Charlotte where if they and us start running out of capacity at Catawba, they can bring water in from Charlotte directly along 521 Lancaster Highway area to bring water in and meet short-term emergency demands. We entered into agreement with Norwood in 2013 to construct the intake on Lake Tillery, build a treatment plant in Union County. And we began really advancing, we advanced the date when we needed the Yakin project then from 2024 up to 2022. And again, that's a function of not building more capacity in Catawba meant we need to move the Yakin project up a little earlier to. You'll see this graph again on the Catawba, on the Yakin specific discussion, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. This is our average day demand, this is our max day demand, and this is really what we have to build to because every day we have to provide water, not just our average day. People like to have water at their house every day, not only on those average days. And what this graph says is, here's our current, we're here right now, and we're planning an expansion of Catawba, and I'll talk about on the, we've gone through the CIP updates, we've talked about that already, but haven't, so we'll get into that shortly. So we have an interim expansion of Catawba in 2019 that'll buy some additional capacity, but really need to get this Yakin onboard because this is Anson, goes away, and we're already having some gaps here. So critical we get Yakin onboard as soon as possible.
But we're serving all our current customers. This is the growth.
Yeah, this is our growth curve. So, I mean, here's where we are today.
Is that permitted or pending or, I mean, so have we permitted more?
Yes, we have, we have permitted, not permitted, we have entered into water sewer extension agreements with enough customer, future customer base that, that what we've contracted 400 today will carry us through that growth curve way through 2022. So if we don't build a plant, we're out of capacity today for new customers, for our customers we've already contracted with. So those new customers we've already contracted with, we have enough capacity to meet their demand and no one knew. So you couldn't enter into any new agreements after, if we decided, or decide we're not moving forward with the Yakin project, you essentially have to shut down development today. Just to schedule in Yakon, we'll talk more about that. We talked a lot in that, in that last workshop back in, in two thousand and sixteen about the water treatment plant site and water distribution, because that was in our master plan consultants' purview to look at, and it was not in our permitting contractor that was doing the Yakon project. So we did it as part of the master plan. We had a number of criteria that we looked at and evaluated. Again, the board, remember, we identified three potential areas in northwest part of, northeast part of Union County. That's just a closer view of the three. We identified raw water transmission routing that'll get to those three sites. We looked at finished water distribution from those three sites, and that's what those color codings are, how you move water out of the treatment plant and into our distribution We looked at the cost comparison between those alternatives, and, and the master plan basically then recommended that we focus on areas just B and C, from a cost perspective, and, and that's what was adopted by the board. So we, that's the area that we looked at, that's actually the area we're now negotiating with a property owner to buy the property. One of the other things that we talked about on this project was resiliency in the system. So when we, we talked about the project and what we do, we talked about the, the transmission lines coming out, and I'll show you in a moment that we actually have a line that crosses over this point in our current CIP. And what that did for us was create some resiliency. And it allows us to move water from one side of the county to the other in an emergency situation. And what this complicated kind of graph looks at, and this is just looking at the Yakon side, and we have a similar graph of the Catawba side. So here's our projection of what the new Catawba plant will be, current Anson supply, the new Catawba plant comes onboard at twelve MGD, and we run through this curve here. Why this drops off, I can't tell you right now. What's in red, or on rust brown here, are a number of emergency supplies that we could tap into. So our existing Anson interconnect, our connections with Monroe, our connections with Charlotte Water. And what we were trying to show the board is, here's our average day demand, and with the Yakon supply and some of these emergencies, we can at least meet the average day demand if the Catawba plant was taken off one completely. So if we had a major catastrophe at the Catawba Treatment Plant, pump station blew up and couldn't pump any water out of it at all, I mean, we could at least meet the average day. So people wouldn't have to concern dramatically, but you can still meet that average day demand. And in some cases, you, with appropriate interconnects, you might even be able to meet some of the max day demands. And it's the same thing on the, on the Catawba side, if the Yakon plant went down completely, we would be able to move water across. Obviously, this would be an emergency only, we have to notify the state, we'd be, the IBT now is a max month and not a max day, so you can increase that amount on a daily basis. But we thought it was an important issue, and we brought this to the board as part of the master plan, to show you that resiliency.
How much do we pay for that pond, emergency pond, the one you were talking about showing us?
The reservoir?
Reservoir.
The reservoir was about a forty million dollar project, and our cost was half of that, because we shared that cost with, with Lancaster. So the, the projects that are in the water capital improvement plan right now, and I'll get into a little discussion on each of these, you can see it's a sizable program, this is what is appropriated to date on these projects, some seventy-three million dollars. In the next six years, I apply eighteen plus the five planning years, we're looking at adding another two hundred and fifty million dollars. You can see the bulk of that is in the Yakon Water Supply Project. Another big chunk is in Yakon, in the Catawba Treatment Plant. This is that additional improvements to the treatment plant and interim expansion, and another big chunk up here on the Z fifty-three zone improvements, and I'll talk about that in a minute, that is that pipeline interconnect.
And that's the, that's which, the pipeline going under Unionville?
This is the, this is the pipeline that will go from Watkins Road, pump station, up Rocky River, and then up Monroe, Old Monroe Highway up into Union Trail area.
Okay, which one is the, is the one that's going from the plant to?
That's within the Yakon project.
So how, how much of the Yakon project?
Again, that, that finished water distribution is about thirty million dollars, there about.
So the whole plant is thirty million dollars? Because I asked you last time, I thought it was a mistake, but you said it.
No, all of this hundred eighty-two million dollars, about thirty million of that is the finished water distribution line from the Yakon.
There's a thirty inch from, there's a thirty inch line from?
Thirty-six inch, yes.
Thirty-six inch line from?
Yes, this line.
To this.
That's about thirty million dollars.
Is that just the line, or is that including the water plant?
That's just the line, Mr. Smith. The water plant's about another eighty million dollars, I think. The two are about, the water distribution line, so the plant's probably about seventy, this is about thirty, total ninety to a hundred million dollars. I don't have the exact numbers off the top of my head right now, current estimates. So this A fifty-three zone is this big, major water distribution project, and this is what it looks like, so it's, I'm sorry? Let me know, I'll move. So this is our existing Watkins Road pump station, and we're building new sixteen-inch water mains that will come up this way, additional water main in this direction, and this is the leg that connects over and will connect into the water distribution line coming off of the Yakon project. So this piece here is the piece that provides the interconnect between the two. These are needed just to serve this area, which is so part of the Catawba River Project, service area.
So that upper leg is a thirty-six inch line as well?
This piece is thirty-six, yes. So this is a sizable project, this project alone is about thirty-something million dollars, is a new water tank that the board acquired the property for this year. And it really is dealing with, the purpose of the project is really dealing with the growth in that area. So that, that's what's driving this project, is the growth in the Indian Trail area, Stallings, north area, the area north of Monroe, and the need to get larger water mains up into that area.
So with that, you'll be able to stop the interbasin transfers coming from Catawba, or?
We'll be able to, I mean, the whole purpose of getting the Yakon project onboard is to be able to mitigate how much water we have to move across into that area.
Will we be giving up that interbasin transfer?
No, no. We'll keep our five million gallon grandfather mount, and we'll maximize it before we build the next expansion of Yakon. So we'll bring the Yakon plant onboard, drop that interbasin transfer to new zero, as we grow in that area, we'll use Catawba water to grow, and when we come up against that interbasin transfer, we'll do the next expansion and drop it back down. So that transfer amount will solve too, over time, as, as we, as the county grows in the Yakon Basin.
So this one, Indian Trail Stallings, may, not was it chapel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that in the section down there, is that in the Catawba-Yakon Basin, no, right?
The basin line runs right down that one line. So that's about where the basin line runs, it's on the Monroe Highway, and that's really about the basin line, is right down the highway.
So this thirty-six inch line is not coming into Catawba Basin?
It is in the Catawba Basin, it is serving Catawba. So this is all Catawba water that's serving this area.
I mean, will we connect it to the New York Water?
Well, we connect it in, that connection's for emergency only. So this area will continue to be served up Catawba Water Treatment Plant. We'll get into more graphics on, on how that water flows. So that project is actually on the design right now, that's in your existing CIP program, and we have additional monies next year for construction. Nine fifty-three zone is our small zone, is up in Stallings area, and it's these two little connected areas here. It's the highest elevation in the county, and because of that, we have a separate pressure zone to meet that area. We're going through a study now, just to see how we can manage that a little bit more effectively. Seven sixty-two, this is the eastern part of the county, and, and we have projects that look at, the biggest project there is this new elevated water tank, which we have just closed. Closed on the property, the new winged water tank?
Pretty close.
Pretty close, almost closed on the property, for this new tank in that zone to provide additional capacity in, in the eastern part of the county, as well as some associated improvements with the Monroe bypass, in terms of getting water lines across, and some other missing improvements to the system in that area. The Catawba Water Treatment Plant, one of the big efforts there, after the reservoir's completed, is to expand the plant from thirty-six to forty million gallons per day. That design is nearly completion, it's about eighty, ninety percent complete. Our schedule is to have that project online by two thousand and nineteen, to meet our needs until, until the Yakon project comes onboard. Eighty-eighty Pressure Zone, this project is essentially wrapping up, and this was the Weddington Water Tank, our new pump station on Providence Road, some pressure reducing valves to create this new higher pressure zone. This was all a lower pressure zone, we created a higher pressure zone in that area to meet the needs of the customers, particularly on this, this northern quadrant that we're really suffering with, with low pressure. So that project is about complete, but still showing its current colors. Which they get since the Yakon project, can provide for our long-term, I think it's out through two thousand and forty, we're looking at permitting, raw water intake, and transmission main, and water treatment plant, distribution system. We also have in the budget, you'll see several annual replacement budget items, so we have one in the waterside, we have two in the waterside, we have two in the wastewater side. On the waterside, we're looking at, I'm sorry, annual water line, we do a lot of this, is just routine projects dealing with booster pump station, tank rehab, we have SCADA upgrade on the waterside in that renewal replacement budget, similarly on the wastewater. We have a lot of galvanized pipe out there, you have two-inch lines, old galvanized pipe, and, and we've got a program that's been in place for years now, about half million dollars a year is what we're budgeting on that, to replace that with, with six-inch lines, get five hardens in those areas, almost two-inch lines is no hybrids. So we're, we're doing that at a half million dollars a year. We also have a tank rehabilitation program, separate and apart from, from the other annual replacement, and we have the short line extension program, and we'll talk in more detail on this as we go through the presentation. And then we also have a master plan element in the CIP, knows we, our plan is to update our master plan every five years. So we did one in two thousand and eleven, we did it in sixteen, twenty twenty-one, you'll see money budgeted in the six-year plan for two thousand and twenty-one.
Short line extensions? I had it on this page.
Again, we've got a whole discussion on this at, at the end of the active discussion. Just a reminder for the board, and for anyone listening in, on the county website, we do have a CIP viewer, so if anyone's interested, they can look at the map and identify any project on this map, click on it, and we'll take them to a detailed project description, and we'll tell them, says the project, what the project is, what it does, and why we're building it. So that's out there live, and being updated on a monthly basis. So the Yakon Project, as I mentioned, is, you know, it's our largest capital program, you know, in the order of two hundred million dollars, it consists of, there it is, a new water intake on Lake Tillery, a raw water transmission main into Union County to a water treatment plant site, and then finished water distribution off of that plant to connect up to our existing water lines. We gave the board an update on this back in August, and we copied a lot of slides out of here for that presentation, and we'll walk through that, and we developed a number of new graphics to give a specific answer to the questions that were raised by the board in previous workshops. So you saw this graph earlier, you know, where it's the same one, where we're reliant on, on our IBT to meet our needs in Yakon Basin. So we do not have a Yakon supply, other than the four million gallons a day we currently purchase from Anson County. So we need more water, and we need more water from the Yakon River in order to meet the county's growing needs. And same graph I showed you earlier, slightly different coloring, colors, this is the Catawba supply, this is the Anson supply, and, you know, our, our demand exceeds our supply in this twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe, which is why we need to get this new box in place, and that is the Yakon project. So countywide, our total supply will exceed, will be exceeded in that twenty twenty-two timeframe, so we need more capacity. So what areas of the county does this new water plant serve? You know, our tagline that, that we developed for the Yakon project, is all part of our outreach, is Yakon water for Yakon customers. And that is, that is an absolutely true and correct statement, that the purpose of this project is to build a water supply system that will meet, meet the county's, western's needs in the Yakon Basin of Union County. And remember, the Yakon Basin of Union County makes up about sixty-five percent, seventy percent of the land area. So most of Union County is in the Yakon, or more appropriately, the Rocky River sub-basin of the Yakon. And we have no supply from that basin, other than that four million gallons from, from Anson. Current demand for water in that system is about eight million gallons per day. So we meet that by bringing water in from Catawba. So the IBT specifically excludes us from providing service to Lomra. It specifically excludes us from providing water from this project to any other entity not included in the IBT certificate, and only Union and Wigan are on that certificate.
Okay, I got a question there. So we cannot supply a town of Marshville with water unless they're on the Union County system?
Unless they became part of the Union County system. We couldn't sell it to them wholesale, because that, that, they'd be a separate customer.
Because of the state.
So this is actually a condition weighed out of our IBT certificate, this is lifted weight from that, and says, the applicants, Union Wingate, my parent medicals, will not resell the water that would be transferred pursuant to this certificate to another public water system. So we can't sell that water to any other public water system. We can't sell it to Charlotte, we can't sell it to Monroe, we can't sell it to Watfield, we can't sell it to Stanley, we can't sell it to anyone else. It was sized for Union County's needs and no one else's.
So if Monroe needed to buy water from us, which we have an agreement that we're selling water now?
Up to, up to one point nine million gallons.
Where do they sell that from?
We sell that very specifically from the Catawba.
So we could sell from the Catawba Basin to?
Actually, that maxes out very, so we sell them that water in the Catawba Basin, and it's right at the.
Industrial area that's in Monroe is in the Catawba Basin.
Well, actually, most of it's all in the Yakon Basin, but we sell it to them in the Catawba, they transfer it to the Yakon. So they are using, the state statute's allowing to transfer up to two million gallons per day without going through an IBT certificate. So since they're buying water from us in the Catawba Basin, they can transfer up to one point nine nine million gallons without having to go out and get an IBT. So they can't get any more from us from Catawba, and we can't sell them anything from Yakon.
So, so as long as it's within the interbasin transfers, we can transfer?
As long as this, well, their current contract limits to one point nine, and that's all they can take, because anything more, they would have to go through an IBT certificate. So it is, you know, the language is very specific, that this water's for Union County and Wingate as our co-applicant on this, and it's for no one else. And, and all of our demands, and all of our projections for water, will be solely in our needs. And the board, some of the board members that were here will remember, back in two thousand and ten, we actually reached out to our neighbors to see about interest in a regional solution, rather than you being able to loan. So we reached out to Stanley, we reached out to Anson, we reached out to Cabarrus, we reached out to Charlotte, and, and to Monroe, and to Lancaster, and said, who wants to participate? Does anyone want to join us upfront now? But if you do, it means you gotta put money in our pockets. And everyone said, we'll talk to you later. You go forward and do what you want to do. Monroe expressed the utmost interest, but WNT has expressed any interest at that time in a partnership. So we went on our own, and the board made the decision, let's go on our own, build this program, meet our needs.
And that's appropriate, from several former commissioners that was involved in the process, that there was always an interest at one point of selling to McHenry County, if we had our interest covered. But you're assuring me that no water from Union County is going to, it's not where you want it?
I ain't going to jail.
Not even from the Catawba interbasin transfers or anything, any source?
From the Catawba plant? No, we, we have no capacity, so we're, we're not getting Yakon.
We will eventually have capacity, so you're assuring me that there's no water?
There is no plan to sell water to, to Lancaster, to, I said, you should. There is no plan to sell water to Lancaster, to, I said, you know, McInnes County. So just wanted to show the board what these basins look like. So this is the Catawba basin, and here's our Catawba River Water Treatment Plant, and there's that big dividing line. All this shaded blue area is actually the Rocky River sub-basin of the Yakkin. And the Yakkin River sub-basin itself is here. So even though this all flows to the Yakkin, the state, in their wisdom when they wrote the IBT legislation, broke this out as a separate basin. And we have to get an IBT certificate because we're pulling water from here, and we cross this little dotted line. And when we cross that dotted line, that's an inter-basin transfer. Even though it's all Yakkin River water, it's going from the Yakkin River sub-basin to the Rocky River sub-basin, and the current state statutes, IBT is an IBT if it crosses the basin boundary as written by the legislature. So anyone that's using water in this area, that's pulling from this area, would have to get an IBT. So Stanley County is going to develop this part of the county and needs water from Lake Tillery, they need an IBT. Cabarrus is going to do that, they need an IBT. If Charlotte's going to do that to serve this area in Charlotte, they need an IBT. So anyone that's pulling water from the mainstream of the river into this part of the state would be required to go get their own inter-basin transfer certificate. So again, we're precluded from serving any of those areas in our certificate, anyone that wants to partner with us in the future would have to go through that same process. So how does the water reopen our system? This is one of the questions some of the board members were raising. So this is a map of our existing main branches of our water distribution system in blue lines. And the grayed out area is the Yakkin Basin that is served by Catawba water. So it's that portion of the Yakkin Basin that we're serving with water from the Catawba Treatment Plant. And dropping in here in purple is that new pipeline project that we talked about, the 853 pressure zone improvement projects of these new water mains. So how do we move water? Comes from Catawba, comes into the SENS tanks there in Waxaw, from there it flows into two of our major pump stations. From those major pump stations, we distribute up to the northern part of the county, out to the southern part of the county, up into Indian Trail, and from here, also up into this whole north central part of the county. And keep this in mind, because this is the area that essentially goes away, as well as a lot of this area goes away, of being served by, with Catawba water when we get the new Yakkin plant on board. So way down, we bring water in from Anson, that comes into, through our pump station, through storage tank there in the Marshall area, flows south into the southern part of the county, also flows north to our Alloquarch Pump Station, which we pump and distribute it up into our elevated storage tank in the northwest part of the county. Why we call that Northwest Tank, I don't know, but it's the North Tank in the west of the eastern part of the county. So that's how the system works today. And we actually have a valve closed along this line. So this water doesn't go this way, and this water doesn't go that way, unless we have an emergency where, which we have had with Anson's supply, where we've had to move water, and literally go out there and open valves to be able to move water from Catawba into those areas. So this is the future water distribution system then, with the Catawba plant staying in line, and the new Yakkin plant coming online. So here's the new raw water main from Yakkin to the treatment plant, this new initial water transmission line that we've been talking about, how it connects up with this pipe. There is also, in the master plan, another water transmission line that we think we can hold off maybe five, six years before we have to build this one, the existing lines will get enough water flow into this area before we have to build that line. So here's how the water will flow in from Yakkin. The water will be pumped directly to the water treatment plant. From the water plant, it'll flow basically out in three different directions, down towards the Marshall area, up towards, through existing lines, up to the New Salem area, and then through this new water distribution line. And each one of these circles is a connection that we will make with every major water line that's in that area. So when we put this new pipeline in, we have a lot of confusion terminology about tapping a line versus a connection. And the utility parlance of tap is what we do for residential customers. And you literally, you go out and you drill a hole, a pipe, three quarter inch hole, you put a pipe fitting in, and you connect it up. So you're literally drilling holes in your pipe. When you're dealing with major water transmission main, when we build that 36 inch pipe, we will put a fitting in that will connect that, through T-fitting, that 36 inch pipe to our 12 and 16 inch lines in that area. So you have an engineered connection, not a, up a drilled hole. And it's drilling those holes in our major water lines that you don't want to do and hurt the integrity. So from there then, you know, once we get the water into that pipe, that then connects into our existing lines and distributes water up into the system, and we also bring water down from the tank into that part of the system. And the Catawba supply stays essentially the same, only this area is now eliminated that was being served, and some of this area that was being served has been pulled back, and in the future, this area will pull back also.
Question, wait, so you're, that round circle there, and you've got the water line, that's probably one heading up to Unionville, is that correct?
Six L.
Ball Park.
Six L line?
Yeah. Is that right? They say that first brown line, Kevin Island Water Treatment Plant. That's probably that Unionville. Can it flow back down toward, where?
Can, well, water will flow wherever you pressurize it to go.
Well, that's what I'm trying to...
Well, the treatment plant will push the water away from it, so you can have a high service pump at the treatment plant and push it away.
Yeah.
And that was one of the things we looked at when we decided to plant whoever our existing needs, and how do you move the water effectively out of it? So it'll get pushed up this way into the New Salem area, it'll get pushed this way down to this water tank here in Marshall.
So that'll be done initially when that 36 inch line goes through?
Yeah, that case will get served even without that 36 inch line, it'll just be able to connect up probably to the existing lines right there. So the 36 inch line will allow all these other water mains that are now under these arrows to connect up and be able to push water in this direction.
And that'll be done initially when we turn that plant on?
Yeah, when that plant's online, that pipe needs to be there to connect up to these lines, otherwise we can't get water into the system. So that's really the main, I mean, the main reason for this pipe is to connect up to the existing pipelines, so we get water out of the treatment plant, push it up into the distribution system, connect it up with our customers. Because way down, this is all being fed through small networks, I mean, it's coming up this way and feeding that way, and its lines are in size to meet the future demand. So we need to get that connection in to be able to push that water out that way.
Please, because that was the initial message.
We developed, may I do, new graphics here to better explain this?
Is to meet the demand for new growth, not serve existing customers. We've got to afford to serve existing customers, you said earlier.
We hope so. Otherwise, we'd be getting a lot more calls.
I didn't see the purple line going there before.
Yeah, that line is in the master plan, it's not part of the initial project, so...
What's the cost?
Oh, I think that line was again, 20, 30 million dollars, 30 million dollars?
Twenty.
Twenty. So we looked at the costs and said, you know, we think we can make this work, particularly if we can continue to get supply from Anson for the next several years, even after our agreement. That's one of the negotiations with Anson, they're willing to continue to serve water. We can delay that pipeline a few more years.
That's why I asked the question about Unionville line, if you could push it the other way, you wouldn't, that wouldn't be a required line, that 20 million dollars you just spoke of. We can feed the system off of that connection, is that a...
No, you don't have enough capacity in there to move that much water.
How big a line do you need to move that much water?
Well, again, the pipeline serves for our 2040 needs, because you don't go in and rebuild pipelines every 10 years. So you look 30 years out, 20 years out at least, in sizing a pipeline. So you're building the pipeline to meet your needs for the planning horizon.
The 218 line, is it an 18 inch, 16 inch, 12?
I think that's a 12, Scott?
And it serves that area?
Uh huh.
Yeah, so this is an existing 12 long here, comes down Morgan Mill Road?
Serves a school?
Uh huh.
Not Morgan Mill Road.
Not New Salem.
New Salem Road.
New Salem Road.
Morgan Mill does not have a line on it.
So that's what the distribution is set up to work in the future. And again, just, you know, the questions asking, we provide service to government line, and these, one of the lines are only sized to meet our needs, so we're not building a pipeline big enough to move water to somebody else, we're building a pipeline big enough to meet our projected needs to that 2040 timeframe. As we grow beyond 2040, we may need to look at expanding our finished water lines, we absolutely know we will need another raw water line from the intake, and that's part of the planning, that we'll build that pipeline in two phases, one to meet our needs through 2040, one to meet our needs beyond that, and run a power when requiring adjustments, requiring it for that. Any future municipal partners, should there be any? So Stanley County decides they do want to partner with us, they would still have to go through an IBT process to utilize water off their system.
The only municipality that would not have to go through that would be Marshall, if they decide to come on Union County system.
They would, they would have to become, they would have to become Union County.
Right.
We could wholesale them water.
Right, same thing from Monroe, they would become Union County.
Yeah, we were specifically excluded from selling to another governmental entity, but if we purchased that system and became part of Union County, I think we could argue with the state that it is now the Union County, part of the Union County service.
And Wingate, because Wingate was one of our partners.
But you said that Anson was going away in a couple of years, unless you could get a little extension. When Anson goes away, how you going to supply water to a municipality that's not included in your IBT?
We have no plans to provide water to any municipality that's not in our IBT. So if they're not in our IBT, if they're not in our service area, and they didn't choose to partner with us, we didn't plan to serve, well, we need to figure out a plan, because these are Union County citizens.
And we just need to come up with a solution.
But working with that municipality, and I know you tried, we need to get serious and make sure the systems of Union County are taken care of. We're running out of time. I mean, Marshall has their own agreement with Anson for water purchase, I'm not familiar with the terms of that agreement, I don't know what it louts to. So that will go, you know, Anson Treatment Plant is still there, I mean, we have a separate agreement with Anson to provide us water, we actually bring water through a separate pipeline, then Marshall uses to bring water to Marshall. So two separate systems.
Isn't that a 24 inch line from Anson?
Ours is.
And Anson's also a 24 inch line, but it serves basically the whole Yakkin basin now, right? A lot of the northern part.
Anson had an existing 12 or 20 inch line, I'd have to go back. So as part of our deal back 20 years ago, there was another line that was built that we paid a pro share of to bring water in, and which is separate apart from what they do with Anson. So I'm not sure what the size of the line feeding Town and Marshall is.
Mr. Ester, you had a good stopping point.
I'm a great stopping point.
Tim, every six.
Next item we'll put together is kind of more of a history, an update of what the county has done in terms of water line extension programs over the years.
Did we miss something? Yeah, I got a, the next slide I've got is restrictions. Says where it's set, is provided by a subdivision for reasons that applicant will not resell the water, it can be transferred pursuant to certificate to another public water system, this limitation shall not apply in the case of proposed resale, transfer among public water systems within the receiving river basin as part of an interlocal agreement with other regional...
Yeah, that essentially repeated what was in this, it was a more detailed version of this, and I didn't know this was in the package, so I just eliminated it. So just, it gives further explanation of the fact that you can't sell water to anybody unless they go get an IBT. Even if you have an interlocal agreement with them, you can't sell it unless they have an IBT.
But there's different, I want this to read, I think. Except if we have an interlocal agreement, we can resell water. You don't have that in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, you read it, maybe I'm mistaken.
So it's saying, except is provided here in this subdivision, this section, a provision that the applicant will not sell water that would be transferred pursuant to the certificate to another public water system. This limitation shall not apply in the case of a proposed resale or transfer among public water systems within the receiving basin. So it's saying, yeah, you can move water within the basin as long as an interlocal agreement or other regional supply agreement exists. Here's a case of provided that each participant, any interlocal agreement or regional other supply agreement is a co-applicant for the certificate.
Which is only Wingate.
Which is only Wingate. So that's what, it's just, that's right out of the statutes, the other part was right out of our certificate.
And nobody else's.
No, only a co-applicant.
If another, another government comes back to us and says, "Do you want to be part of this?", do they go through the whole IBT process?
Yep.
Starts from scratch?
It would be our IBT that they would have to amend, it would have to be a partnership with us, we need an interlocal agreement to do that, because the IBT is who owns the water when it crosses the basin line. And that's our raw water pipeline that crosses that basin line, so anyone who wanted to partner with us would have to work with us to amend our IBT. Obviously, I think we would probably require that it had to be to feral cost of doing an IBT, but it would be actually our IBT certificate that would be limited.
And a minimum of five years for that process?
Three to five years, three to five million dollars, it's current, current program.
Is there a gallon limitation on that? Because you said something about bringing in one raw water line and anticipating bringing in another, is there a limit or not?
Our pipelines right now are sized, so the plan right now, the raw water line from Lake Tillery to our treatment plant is sized solely to meet our needs through 2040. So that's all we'll do. So if someone else wanted to participate, it would, it would take several years to get there, and what it would do, so we could all move forward, would change the size of that new pipeline that we're going. So our plan right now is going to put in a 36 inch line now from the treatment, from the intake, and in the future, put another 36 inch line. So if we had other partners, it may change the size of that future pipeline.
I'm just saying that a second 36 inch line, we're not limited. No, right now.
We are authorized already to do the 36. We're authorized for that capacity, up to 23 million gallons per day. So that pipeline will not bring 23 million gallons per day.
Conceivably, we could just put in a single line, 72 inch line.
You could have, and when we look at the economics of it, and when we look at the little quality issues of having that big of a pipeline with limited initial flow, decisions may, you know, we'll put an initial pipe, we'll come back in parallel later.
So we're bringing a 36 inch line in from raw water, and we're sending a 36 inch line out?
Yep.
Is there a, is there anything left over?
There's some lost water.
I have two garden hose together, I don't get, I mean, it's the same inch line.
But one of the reasons for that 36 inch finished water line is to really create a distribution equilibrium also. So it is bigger than we need to just move water, but if you remember from Jordan, we connect in to all these points, we want to have the same pressure at all those connection points. So you make the pipe a little bit bigger than it needs to be just to move the water, because you want it to be that equalizing, it's like a manifold on your car. So that's kind of a manifold for those water lines, and you want to equalize that pressure going out into those lines.
Where do you catch up? Do you catch up in people not using the water at night? Or how do you, like, you're bringing 36 inches and slime in, you're holding it in a reservoir?
Well, the line is sized to meet your max demand coming in, and the distribution line is sized to meet your max demand going out. Those don't occur at any given point in time. So you'll be bringing, there'll be some onsite storage to meet those hourly fluctuations, so that's part of the treatment plant process.
Will you have enough to even do any lines if we decide to do any lines to wait for the plant?
Will we have enough water?
Yeah.
Well, you have enough water to meet our current projected demands through 2040, so if we start expanding our service area, it just means you take that 2040 timeframe, if you bring in more customers, it means you'll run out of water sooner, and you'll have to move forward with an expansion sooner.
Maybe, if I may, if you'll explain it in terms of flow rate? The flow rate for the 36 inch line coming from the Yakkin may not be the same flow rate as the 36 line leaving the treatment plant.
That's correct.
So there is a difference.
So you are, you are bringing in more water than a 36 inch... So you are, you are bringing in more water than a 36-inch line is going to draw out?
Yes. Because you're going to lose some water in process, you need to, you're going to put some in storage. And what goes out is based upon who's irrigating that day and who's not. So you're sizing to meet that, that demand based upon what our customers draw from the system.
What kind of basin you'll be, like we had at the Catawba, where you're handsome now at 30 days?
No, we don't have it this. No, we are not planning on a raw water storage. So since we're pulling from a reservoir, now the Catawba project pulls directly from the river. So we're not pulling from a reservoir from Lake Norman or, or Lake Wiley. We pull directly from the river there at the water treatment plant. And that's why we need to build a reservoir to have some storage. In, in the Yadkin project, we're pulling from, from Lake Hillary. So we have a reservoir to meet our needs. So if there's drought, that reservoir is going up and down and we can operate within that reservoir. What we're ready to build is finished water storage at the treatment plant site. So we'll probably build a couple of million gallons of storage at the site to be able to meet those instantaneous peaks during the day. So you want the treatment plant more normalized and you work off storage to meet those peak Water line extension update. Want to get one through a little bit of history, a lot of which predates me. Talk about our current program, arsenic work and contamination issues, and then leave it to the board to, to provide any future direction of discussion. So the original self-help program started back in, 2000 was the first projects that went in place. The program was modified in 2006. And in 2012, we essentially replaced the self-help program with a new water line extension program that is in the water sewer line extension ordinance. So the original program was adopted in 2000, in 1999, first project went into place in 2000. It was adopted briefly as a pilot program to provide financial assistance to customers that wanted to connect either water or sewer. So it wasn't just water line, it was either. At that time, the county would front up to $50,000 in materials for each project, regardless of the size of the project, the number of customers, and the customers bore the rest. And apparently, five projects were, were constructed between 2000 and 2005 using that approach. In 2006, the program was modified based upon a value of a customer to the utility system and to the general fund for public health contributions. So the value was based on the utility customer value and the general fund contribution based upon public health concerns. And the utility funding was based upon a calculation done by COO four secessions ago, four predecessors ago, and estimated a value of $2,200 for a water customer and $1,400 for a sewer customer. The general fund was, was set at $2,000 per participant, again, subject to budget availability. And then the balance of the cost was to be borne evenly by the customers. And the way this dynamic set up basically said, we're going to, we're going to kick in so much money for every customer that, that wants to participate in this program. And the dollar values that were put in the program basically encourage neighborhoods or subdivisions to get together because that's where the numbers worked. If you can get a lot of customers in a short area, the part that they have to pay for shrink because the part that we're kicking in was fixed per number of customer. So if you have 10 customers on a mile of pipe versus 10 customers on a, you know, 1,000 feet of pipe, obviously, you get a much better deal. So the projects, seven projects in all were put in place doing that, servicing 207 customers. And all of those projects, in fact, were in subdivisions. And numbers we came up with, we think that the general fund contributed about half a million dollars to the program in that timeframe. And this is one of those projects for my, my guess, and I haven't researched this, is that these were probably the early projects and these were the ones that went in the modified program after 2006, which were all in subdivisions.
Say that again, I couldn't see.
I think these projects were probably.
I can't see.
The early version of, yeah, I'm sorry, these outliers on the, because these all came in in subdivisions and I'm familiar with most of these and I know these were all the projects.
Yeah, the ones there were prior, but ones at Union, Old Union School, and then there's a, a street or little dirt road beside of it. And yeah, a lot of those are done prior to 2006.
So that was the self-help program. The water and sewer line extension program was adopted in 2012. And the focus there, from my recollection, was the recognition that the existing program was really dealing with subdivisions and wasn't helpful to somebody that was 1,000 feet away from existing water line, wanted to connect because they, they couldn't get enough momentum going to make it happen. So the program that is designed in 2012 was really designed for individuals or small groups of residents that were near existing water lines that wanted to extend.
When, when did we stop people from connecting, like getting a deed right away or report? Basically, we told them they could not, meaning all to come across and ask, probably even with the right one.
I think that was in 2012, 13 timeframe.
Any particular reason that was stopped?
The problem we had with that is that, you know, we, we're dealing with a lot of legacy issues where we had that kind of situation in both water and sewer where customer cut a deal with their neighbor, you know, let me get a, a line across your property to serve my property because I don't face on the road. And then that works out fine and dandy and then somebody sells the property and they cut the line and there's no recorded easement. And we've been having issues since our budget on that issue, both on water and on sewer. Sewer was really problematic, particularly in the Waxaw area where we had private sewer lines running across separate pieces of property and no way for us or the property owner that that line served to, to manage that connection.
So could, could that be looked at again to make sure if it's a needed right away?
Well, the way it's set up right now is that if there's, if there's a easement, we will connect at the point ingress egress to that parcel. So if you have a parcel and you have an ingress egress easement across your neighbor to get to your parcel, we will connect up where you have that ingress egress easement. We just won't let you run through their backyard and, and connect. You've got to have a, a, a needed easement or that gives you access to your property. So it's been resound being successful, our short line extension program in terms of interest. But when the program was set up, it was limited to a half a million dollars per year. And as you can see, we now have over 350 applicants who have come on and warning service and we've connected some 130. So we are, we're not keeping pace. We were hopeful after year two or three that these lines would parallel each other, but you can see they continue to separate a little bit. We're getting more demand than we are getting people connected. So there is definitely a gap in, in the program.
Go back to that for just a minute because I think it's important to note that on the health hazard, we have only received 12 certificates of health hazards. And the 12th one is actually on the agenda item tonight. They're in that grouping, are they not?
I think so.
That's my understanding. Okay.
Yeah, I guess there's no way to put a price value on each applicant's line because each project's different.
Yeah, each applicant is different in terms of what it will cost. Some of these applicants will go away. You know, so we've had applicants as their needs come up and we go, well, here's what this is going to cost you. And they go, what do you mean it's going to cost me $50,000? I thought you were paying for it. Said, no, we paid for the first 1,000 feet. You're 5,000 feet away, you're a mile away. We're going to pay for that first 1,000, you got to pay for the next four. And they go, thank you very much, Mal. So even though there's a demand that's out there, most, some of those people will not connect. And we have not gone through to try to estimate who might or might not connect. So this was the self-help program. This is where those fell in. These are our, in red are our applicants, in green are the ones that we've actually implemented. And I put this up here just to show you that it is throughout the county. When the program was initially put in place, my, my personal estimate was this quadrant of the county is where we would see most of the activity. Because there are a number of water lines out there, I know we have a lot of people on wells in that area. And I was surprised that, no, it's pervasive, it's throughout the county, we have interest everywhere.
If there was an extension, if there was a water line existing on Highway 601, which is a major order, if there was one on 207, 205, 200, you think you would see more applicants come in or less or same?
Well, there, I mean, there is a water line that we look here in 601, so that's where these people are probably.
I'm talking about 601 South.
Oh, 601 South. As you go over to.
Yeah, your applicants and projects tend to be around water.
You would certainly, you would get interest in by those that are adjacent. I add it on to this then, the, the black dots are from previous presentation we gave you on, on wells that have shown positive for arsenic. I think it's actually it's arsenic and manganese that they show positive for. And I pointed out also just to show that it is really pervasive in the county, it is not one little geographic area or another. It's essentially everything south and, and east of this line here, and that's where the geology kind of shifts is right along here and the rest of the county winds up in that naturally occurring groundwater, natural occurring soils that have arsenic in them. So if you're, if you're looking at, at solving, dealing with that issue, it is kind of pervasive throughout most of the county. And, you know, that's just the same map for about 2016 briefing.
Was that tested everywhere or just some spratic case?
I believe it's just a test that we had. So as people have requested tests that, and that we have results from. So our legal is a effort by environmental health goal, test everyone's well. These were people that requested tests and we have results for. Again, just the same map when we briefed the board in 2016. In, in 2016, we briefed the board on, on this issue and we came up with some cost estimates of what would it take to deal with all of these connections? And, and we did a very simplified analysis and basically said, we know it's not real, but we're just going to assume we can run a straight line from every well to an existing water main. And we're going to ignore roads and properties and everything else just to come up with an approximate cost of what it would take. So we just went through our GIS, said connect it up, find the nearest perpendicular line and, and make a connection. And that resulted in approximately 160 miles of water main. Our cost at that time was about $50 per linear foot. Our cost now is more $55 to $65 per linear foot. So we're looking at just that program alone is going to do 45 to now $55 million. And again, I went through the estimates. That cost is probably very low because if you were really running water lines, you'd have to actually map out a route, go down right away, could easily be double that. So this was just trying to ballpark for the board that you're not talking $5 million, you're talking $50 million, maybe 80 million or more.
Ask you, what, those properties, are they affected in tax? Are they valued at a lower value because they have a contaminated well?
But it doesn't mean the water is not usable. We have, I mean, just because there's arsenic, what's the other one?
Magnesium.
Thank you, thank you. Is in the well, if the, if the environmental health section has not said, do not consume this water, then it is not considered a contaminated well. So, you know, it depends upon the levels within the wells that they say those wells can still be used for household purposes.
So if, if the government ever required, does the government require, anybody require them to acknowledge that whenever they sell the house?
Oh, yeah.
I guess they did. What kind of value does it?
It affects the value, affects the ability to sell property, but I can't tell you, you know, protect your property, it's 10% down or whatever, I can't tell you that.
How many points were on that?
Gee, where's Aubrey? Out sick. I, I, hundreds? I don't know the number off the top of my head. Aubrey wouldn't know that number. But yeah, we, there were hundreds. My gut feel wants to say, you know, 300, 400 in that range, 3, somewhere around that.
And that's just the properties that are tested, not all properties are tested.
This is the data that existed at the time.
How many wells do you need to do?
I'd do that number.
A wall.
Narrow line.
8,000.
So we, we provided the board with this comparison in terms of what would it take, what would be the cost per home for a line extension? And, and what we're showing, that baseball numbers we ran, you know, looking at capacity fee and plumbing and tap fees, that capacity fee is wrong because at the time, the proposal was to increase our capacity fee from 12 to $2,400 and the board did not take that action. So that, this is what was presented to the board, but I want to point out that that number did not get acted on. So it's really $1,200. So you can take $1,200 off that total. But it's still in the order of, you know, $12,000 to $100,000 if you just looked at those properties because there's, there's so much distance between them as compared to a whole, an advanced whole house treatment system would be maybe $5,000. So we left it with the board at that and said, that's where we are. And at this point, we had no future directions. Concerns have been raised recently on what would it take to run water lines throughout Union County and what does that look like and what would that mean? But I just pointed out again, that if the issue is dealing with arsenic, that arsenic is truly pervasive throughout Union County. And if you wanted to deal with that issue, you would be, be looking at, at a lot of pipeline. So we, we again used our GIS system to do some, what, I corrected the next table, I wouldn't even call them estimates, I would call these rough approximations. This is not something we would put in a budget, this is not something we would get up and testify for, this is, here's an order of magnitude of what we're looking at. So the first thing we did was say, okay, what if we just run down the major arterials? Run down 601, 205, the rest of 200, you know, and get major arterials in there. The second level was, okay, let's fill in with some of the major secondary roads and all these connect to our existing water lines, which are not shown. So these will all connect in with existing water lines to create that network. And then that already gets you up to a million linear feet doing that. And the third is literally, all right, we're going to go throughout Union County and, and we're going to get water lines everywhere. And that's basically putting a water line on every road in Union County that does not have a water line now. So, and you can see that number goes astronomical and we're now looking at a total of 5 billion square feet. And, and when you put an approximate cost on it, just that first level is probably in the 20 to 30 million dollar range. That second level, doing both one and two, kick you to 60 to maybe 90 million dollars. And to do everything, you're, you're looking 300 to, I don't even know what the upside cost is, particularly as you get to that level. All we've done in this estimate was look at linear feet of pipe and use our $55 per foot. Obviously, you're getting into a level where you're adding 5 million linear feet of pipe into new pumping, you're doing water mains, you're not just eight-inch lines. So there, that's why there's such a big region cost. The lower end is just that eight-inch line everywhere, but we're anticipating you would have to, obviously, do a major new infrastructure. So to do water lines everywhere, yeah, it's a big dollar.
So for the cost of the 38 six-inch line going from New Salem Road to Indian Trail area, Rocket River, Watkins Road, please? For, for less than the cost of that, we could do level one.
But, but you still have to do something. You can't just eliminate that 36-inch line connection. You have to, you have to connect the plant up.
I got you. Or, or delay the growth.
Or, no, if the board wants to stop, I mean, again, you would stop growth tomorrow.
Right. Level two, we could do what you're talking about with the plant, the line going just to Wingo, that nobody hooks on to.
Commissioner, I'd point out though, if, if you were to stop the water treatment plant and not.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
All right, Craig, can you handle this for board? I'm not talking about stopping the water treatment plant.
Yeah, you are. Because if you don't connect it to the distribution system, you can't use.
Well, you have a distribution system that's there. It's just now the 36-inch line.
And this is not connected to the treatment plant. You're going to build a new treatment plant up in an area with a, with a 12-inch water line coming out of there that is not going to serve your customers. You have to connect it up.
I think you would connect several 12-inch water lines coming out of there.
There's only one treatment, or there's only one 12, 12-inch line at that location.
Or an 18-inch line.
It's not even, in fact, I'm not even sure it's 12.
It's 12.
Is it 12 then?
But listen, I'm, I'm glad that y'all did this because my understanding was you weren't going to do this for tonight. So I'm glad you did this because this.
I think what I said was if we could do within a reasonable amount of time.
That's right. So I'm glad, thank you for doing this because this really gives us some answers here, some, some targets to shoot at. And if you're going to build a plant in an area that needs water and has emergency needs for water that we heard at the last meeting, then. for water that we heard at the last meeting, then, yeah, this shows me that we can, this is within reach. And let me ask you this, can it be done with enterprise fund money?
It, I, I think it would depend on what you were doing. I mean, part of the challenge with the water line extension program is if we invest $100 million on water line extensions, we can't require anybody to connect.
Right.
But you'd say it's strictly voluntary if someone wants to connect to the system or not. So it is very difficult to make a business case that says we're going to run water lines through an area with no, you know, no way to anticipate who might connect if you might not.
And I don't disagree with you. I'll, I'll say this, that 36 inch line, we're hoping that the towns keep rezoning property. We're hoping that developers continue to build, we're hoping there's not a recession. There's a lot of business decisions there and moving that much water to an area that's already, um, has growth and is being maintained by our current system. To put that over there now instead of maybe delaying or looking at different ways of transmitting the water over there, um, I think we, I think we have a lot more discussion that we need to look at before we make a decision of serving the whole county or serving just a area that's already overcrowded.
I was just cautioning the commissioner today, you know, you're, you're getting into engineering solutions.
Right.
So, and, yeah, we've looked at the engineering solutions. I, I would strongly recommend against the board putting in a 14 and 18 inch line instead of a 36 and then having to come back in 10 years and rip that out and put in a 36 inch line. Um, you know, proven planting is you will put in a line that's going to need, need your needs for the next 20, 30 years. So you're going to have to build infrastructure to connect that plant up to the existing water lines.
Ed, we've got a situation that you've told us a lot of this information, that you've got a hole in the roof. And you fix the hole in the roof or you buy a new car. And, you know, when you tell us that there's arsenic in the wells, when you tell us that we have issues in the municipality where lead's in the water and the mayor's confirmed that, um, you know, what do we do? Do we fix the problem at hand or do we go ahead and worry about the new residents?
Commissioner, I'm not suggesting that which way the board wants to go on water line extension. I mean, that's a policy for the board to decide. I just want to point out that if you're moving forward with the Yakkin project and you're going to build that $180 million, $170 million project and not build the connecting pipeline, you're not going to be able to use your $170 million investment. So if you look, because it won't connect to your distribution system, you won't be able to get the water out of your.
So this water is never intended for Eastern Union County?
Connect, Commissioner, it doesn't connect to the pipeline unless you connect it. It doesn't, you're going to go to a treatment plant, you have to connect, you've got the infrastructure.
And, and also that you're not adding the cost of the sewer plant that's going to require to treat that water that you're sending over to Indian Trail.
That's in the.
How many millions of dollars is that going to be?
That's in the.
How many millions of dollars is that? 80 million, 90 million?
I think the new treatment plant, I could go back and look, but yeah, it's in that probably new order, $60 million, I think.
Okay. So it's another $60 million for a sewer to treat the plant, treat this water that we're sending over in the 36 inch line.
That if, if, if the board chooses not to move forward with the project, that's a board decision.
Help me understand where your concern's coming into because there, there are two 36 inch lines that we're talking about. One is just to.
One, last meeting was just one.
There's two.
Yeah, last meeting was just.
Well, there's, there's two. If you look at the math, it's a 36 inch line to get the raw water to the treatment plant and then 36 inch line to serve the Yakkin basin.
Yeah, Indian Trail, Stollins.
Yes. And when you look at the numbers, when, based on the permits that are already issued, we don't have enough water without that to service the permits that we have.
And we didn't have enough permits issued to serve the wastewater treatment.
Wait, is your proposal to shut down growth today? Because when I look at it, I look, I see this as two problems. If you're proposing to run at level one, not only are you putting out $27 million and you can't force anybody to connect, which I would love the residents to want to connect, anybody who has arsenic, I would waive tapping fees for that, no problem with that. But now every mile you run that roadway, you just open that up for additional development, putting additional strain on our existing water supply. So I don't even know, if, if we were to go to level three and every resident of Union County run water, do we even have enough water in our existing IBTs and the Yakkin to supply that?
No. No, I mean, the, the existing IBT that's permitted was based on our growth projections within the existing service boundary. So it did not anticipate, you know, a, a $300 million infusion of cash to run water lines to areas currently not served. So that would obviously add to the, the demand on the system. No idea what that number would be without, you know, doing some, some additional planning and engineering, but no, we did not include that additional growth that, that would occur with people connecting.
And this is where, this, this is where the commissioner versus the business conflicts. And this is where, are we elected to represent all the citizens of Union County or are we elected to represent public works? And the issue, and I've been bringing those issues up for three years, it's not something new. So when you're looking at the Yakkin supply, I've talked with several county commissioners been involved in this over the years, and they said, hey, we thought it was to help get water to Northern Union County. The residents in Northern Union County, the New Salem area, the, they've all been told this is to get water to you. And they believe that, they believe commissioners and they've told them that. Now, should the commissioners have told them that? Probably not if they were being told something different. But I believe that they actually believe that that's what this was for, is addressing these arsenic in the wells. If we start getting to a place where the people can't sell their houses, you know, somebody's going to start coming up and saying, look, I can't sell my house because of arsenic in the well. Why are you charging me anything for, it's worthless, it's not, anybody.
Well, before we make the assumption that you can't sell your house because arsenic in the wells, I would like to see the homes that have been tested to see what their history has been, whether they've been able to sell.
I would too, and I, I would too.
I, I look at, and to me, I'm looking at it from a resident, not as a, um, as a public works person, I'm just looking at it from a reality standpoint to say, we have X amount of water that's available through what we have in the Catawba River versus what we have proposed for the Yakkin. We need both to be able to supply our existing customer base, not new.
No, no, he said new last meeting.
This is, this is our existing customer base and commitments as you see on, on the graph.
Commitments to new, yes.
That are already coming in. This is already commitments that, that.
That you made those commitments, huh?
The county's already made these commitments.
Did you make those commitments? Did I make them? Did this board make those?
You, you may have made these commitments as a prior board member.
May, well, may I? But I don't remember ever being asked, can I connect on the water and say yes? As a matter of fact, we were trying to tell people back then that there's not enough sewer, that you're being told that there's 13 million gallons of sewer, that there's not there, it's only 3 million gallons of sewer.
Have you ever approved a subdivision?
Um, yeah.
Then you, then you're part of.
I have enough meaning.
Then you're part of the concern. If I approve one, then I, I'm, I'm part of it as well. Every commercial, everything that we've approved.
And commercial especially. And, you know, that's the other part, because we're told that commercial, we're upside down residential to commercial, that we got an emergency. I think Chris, I chastise him a little bit for the canary in the cage with the sailboat flipping over. If the sailboat's flipping over and the canary's in the cage, then the opportunity that we have is to slow the water going west and take care of the farms in the east.
My understanding of watching the, the presentation is that the water from Yakkin will stay in the Yakkin basin.
Right.
We're not, we're not moving water. The 36 inch line that you referenced, I believe, is simply an interconnect to allow if one system goes down to the other, to make sure that the residents that have existing water will continue to have that water supply.
And push as much as possible over to the west.
Nobody's, nobody's pushing anything to the west. No, you are sure not, that's not what I said. No, the, the, Commissioner, it's not what I said. If I'm wrong, my understanding is that what Yakkin does is stops us from pushing water to the east.
Correct.
And when Yakkin basin, when the transfer is done.
What do you tell residents?
You will only be pumping from the Yak, from the Catawba Basin over to the Yakkin Basin as part of that IBT, right?
Wait, 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 now, we, we pump up the 7 million gallons a day over from Catawba Basin into the Yakkin Basin, which I describe as the eastern two thirds of the county. So that's what we're doing right now. The Yakkin supply is to allow us to stop doing that, to not use Catawba water in the Yakkin Basin. The Yakkin project is to serve the Yakkin Basin.
Right.
Not, not to serve the western part of the county, it's to serve the Yakkin Basin, which is essentially everything if east of 74 and then going south down 200.
If the water from the Yakkin Basin is not going into a, into a sewer pipeline, if it's going into a septic tank, is that a concern? Do we need, do we still need the wastewater treatment plant?
That's part of our whole IBT calculation. We look at how much will be served on, on sewer, how much will be served on septic, how much returns back, that's all part of that calculation.
So if you have, if it goes into a septic tank, it still goes back into the basin? Right?
No, it's considered consumed.
So it goes not go back into the basin?
It's not, no, not in the IBT calculation because it's not a direct discharge back. So even though you know and I know it's going to get into groundwater and eventually it'll flow there, in the IBT calculation, that is not considered a return flood. So if you put in a wastewater treatment plant and discharge it to a stream and it goes back.
So how do we return this water that fast when we don't have a sewer plant?
Excuse me?
We don't have a sewer plant in that basin now, the Rocket River Basin, except for Monroe.
No, we have our Crooked Creek facility.
Okay, so we're going.
And we have three wastewater treatment plants, that's 2 million gallons per day.
So it goes too many, how many?
And right now, the Poplin Road pump station pumps over 2 million gallons per day from the Crooked Creek area back to 12 Mile. So we have the wastewater mass plant, which we haven't discussed, yet balances all that out.
Well, here's my concern, here's my issues. We have, um, an opportunity to look at putting water to more places in the county. It costs peanuts compared to the other projects we're doing. Uh, when you look at the level one, doing 20 to 27 million dollars, you're already talking about two pipelines that you're going to put in for that. Uh, so what is our plan? Our, it's our intention to do what commissioners over the years have said they wanted to do and have indicated they want to do and felt strongly about what they wanted to do, which was provide water to Eastern Union County to be able to provide a good source, a clean source of water. And if it's not what we're interested in doing, then, you know, I'm fine with what we're doing, meeting our commitments, I'm fine with that. But we've been, you know, you weren't here at the last meeting, thank you, gave us the emergency plan for the water I drink, you know, the water that I'm getting at my house. They gave us emergency plans that we're going to have to make better connections in Franklin County in order to do that. I don't know how on the eastern side of county, I'm getting water from Franklin County, but bad coming the other way. But these are the things that they're worried about, these are the things that are concerned about. We've been told about lead in the water in Marshall. Um, you talked to Melissa Merrill today with the school board and assured her that there was no water quality issue there. Do we?
In our system, we can't speak to somebody else's.
Wait a minute, do we, do we check that water at East Union and at Middle School and Marshall Elementary School? Do we check that water?
I spoke with the chairwoman today and told her very specifically that the Marshall system is a separate independent utility. We have no data on it.
That's right.
We don't monitor it, we do not track what goes on, that they report directly back to the state. So we have no information directly and we've mortaled us.
We have assured her that there's no problem. And we don't even check the water. At East Union and at Marshall, we don't check the water. Do we know anything about the water? You got any documents on the water in Marshall?
Well, just for the last year, there were these three, uh, three different instances of lead that's seen in, that was the lead in the last, in 2017.
So, so we've told them not to check their water, everything's fine. And I've got a problem with that. I, me and my daughter goes to school at East Union, got kids that go to Marshall, we've got a lot of friends, always go to East Union, and we're telling them they don't even need to check it, and we don't take it.
The comments I made to the chairwoman today was the water served by Union County to our customers is safe to drink.
Right.
But I said I could not comment and would not comment on the water provided by Marshall because I don't have any other information and we don't oversee Marshall.
I think what she told me is the county manager assured me, called you, ensured you that water was safe to drink. And then after she asked you some questions, you said, oh, we don't test that water, that, you'd have to ask the state for the results. That's my understanding of what she told me. But last week, you called her and assured her that the water was safe to drink.
And it's the first time I talked to Russ today?
Well, it's the first time you talked to her, but not the first time you called her.
First time I talked to Russ today.
And up to message for her last week. Um, so, you know, we're getting a, you know, we're, this is serious stuff. When you're talking about people's drinking water, that's a necessity of life. So if we're assuring people that the water's okay, and again, I'm, I'm not going to vote for the 36 inch line until, until I see some solutions going to the eastern part of county, the southern part of county, and the northern part of county. It's been promised water for many, many years, that everything's going to come, we're going to get water close to you. We don't have to put a pipe in every house, but we need to make our extension policy reasonable. We need to get those 350 people. Our demand is way out reaching our service. And this goes to your question, and, and this is a serious question. I, I'm taking serious because, you know, you've got 350 people and we're not even able to meet that demand of the people who are asking for water. If it was close to their house, you'd have thousands of people, thousands of households.
I have no issue, and, and if I, and I have had separate conversations, I have no issue with the water line extension program being moved in. I have no problem with that whatsoever. My concern is investing 80 or 100 million dollars in Union County taxpayer money to run a line across, let's say, 300 people's homes and only 10 people decide to connect because there's no law that requires them to connect. If you have a line of people that would like to connect, then I'm sure that as a county, we would be happy to evaluate how that works.
And I think we need to do that.
Regarding other services or other providers of water and sewer systems, I guess my question would be, that, that's something that they need to address. If we need to help them address that, if they would like to partner, then we open to discussion. But if it's a separate entity, if any, any other towns that have an issue with any type of their water and sewer system, to me, that is a responsibility that they have taken upon by owning the system, if they would like help. I, I have no problem with working with them, but.
And I think every commissioner in this room has been about helping and, and doing stuff for the people who need and have emergency situations. That's why we go to the word emergency so much is because I think everybody in here has a compassion for people who need help, truly need help. And I think that we're willing to do what it takes. And that's just what I want to see. I just want to see us as a board take some steps that have been talked about for years. I mean, if you take water over into eastern part of county, you're going to get industry over there, you're going to get other things over there. The bypass is going to create opportunities. Even if you get residential growth, you're going to get, uh, growth that is going to, you know, not be as burden on the system like this, as much over in the southwest, southwest and northwest areas of the county. So, so again, my concern is not stopping the water plant. I don't want to stop the water plant. I want the water plant. I want the water plant quite more than anybody in the room, but it is to solve some problems along with facilitate the new growth.
Why would you not support a 36 inch line to allow the residents of the county to have water if there's a problem?
He told us and confirmed last time, this is not for the current residents who are going to be paying increased water rates for years to come, to pay for all this. We've been told that.
It is.
What?
I mean, you and I watched the same presentation.
Yeah, they, they have water and he said they, the existing customers' needs are met.
When I look at the presentation and I look at whether it's the, the Yakkin Basin customers or it's the Catawba Basin customers, that 36 inch line, once all the, all the plant's completed and the Yakkin line is coming in, both areas will be serviced by water from both areas in the event of an emergency. So that any customers that live in the area at the time it's completed will not go without it's completed will not go without water. They will be provided clean, fresh water as appropriate. That's the way I saw it. The 36 inch line isn't to pump water from Yakkin over to Catawba.
No, it's to pump, we're yakking to the northern part, they're getting water from the Catawba right now, an IBT, an emergency transfer, and what they're talking about is for new residents.
But if the only reason, if the only reason to put a line in, and this is where I'm struggling with some of the comments, it was to service that area of the county, why would we have not voted to put a treatment plant just in that area of the county? Part of our discussions when we voted on the location of that treatment plant was to be able to serve over the long term the entire Union County resident basin. So that's why we wanted to make sure that it was in the most geographically appropriate spot for long-term growth, which included Marshall, it included, basically, every area of the county at some point will be serviced by a treated water supply.
And you were a member from any meeting that you're not in, and now we had the 2-on-1s where I've said things maybe that you didn't hear, but every meeting, we've talked about this, my interest was putting it close to the New Salem and the county line, it's possible, you've heard me probably say that before, because of being able to reach more customers that are in the east. And, you know, when I grew up, up in that area, in the New Salem area, in Union County, we washed our clothes, our blue jeans looked like they were dirty as soon as we washed them. It's horrible water, it's not just arsenic, it's other issues. And that's why so many people are clamoring to get in that program, because it's a, you know, when you wash them blue jeans and they come out looking brown, you know they're clean, but the kids at school make fun of you because your clothes are brown. You know, that's a serious issue, and the people have to treat that. They're paying hundreds, thousands of dollars a year to treat that water, to provide, you know, water softeners, things like that, and the arsenic, water, trying to drag that stuff out of the wells. And it's still, again, an issue, when you go to sell that house and that person says, well, I do have an arsenic issue in the well, you know, it's hard to sell it, right? So, you know, these people are getting nothing. I mean, they're getting, you know, they got a school to go to, but, you know, what are we gonna do? We've been telling them, not we, but the boards and members of the boards have been telling them for years, it's coming. You know, you were saying, our long-term plan is to serve the county. Well, the longer-term plan is to serve people that need it. The shorter-term plan is to send it to the places that are already, you know, burdened, roads and other problems that they've got. And they're asking for a break. You know, people are getting elected, saying they're gonna stop growth. Well, what happens if they stop it? And then we've got all this water going over there. First, we're just trying to do it in a slower manner, a more thought-out manner. And again, if I'm wrong, and I'll be glad to admit that I'm wrong, it just looks like we're trying to force a lot of water to the northwest than trying to solve problems for existing homeowners, existing residents and citizens that pay taxes. And again, if you talk to the folks over there, the area down there where Jerry's from, he's heard the same stories. We just need a plan. We need, not just to work in one direction, but we need to decide, you know, is it better to try to serve the residents that are paying taxes, the people who need the water, our neighbors that we talk to all the time. You know, that map that he put up where the line went from Union, to Union, Old Union School to the playground, that was, you know, those people jumped right on that, trying to get help. And it's a long road with just a few houses on it, but they put a water line in to serve each other. There's churches that get together, like up in Love Mill Road, Antioch Church. If it wasn't for the church being able to try to get water to them too, it would've been very hard for the sporadic houses to put stuff in. But if we can run down major arteries to start with and let people start tapping on, I think you'll see a lot of people that'll help and run their own lines if we're creative with the water extension policies to get it to their house. So I think you can diminish that number on Level 1, 2, 3 by quite a bit, just by people saying, I want it faster, then you're able to get it to me, and if we've got a good self-help program, that'll facilitate that. People jump on it. I've sold these and helped, you know, talk to people about these and said, look, if you wanna do it, you gotta put an investment in it. Every time, they, you know, work to do it and try to get the water to them. And they get creative. Our home share is one of the ones that has the needed right away, that comes across to his line. And he said, you know, they don't let us do that anymore, they won't let anybody else on the road do that. So again, getting creative, finding ways to facilitate this. Now, it does, it does delay the need for a sewer plant, because if you don't have water going in, you don't need the sewer plant to treat it. It's going in the septic tank. So if it does have an issue with the IBT, you know, I'd like to know that. That's good information, know that if we have to put it into a sewer plant and send it back, that would be nice information to have. But I think that if it goes into the same basin, whether it goes into a septic tank or a sewer plant, then it's the same thing, still, everybody's certain. I could be wrong, if I hear anything different, I'd be glad to hear it, but that's what you're saying. If it goes into a septic tank in that basin, then it's consumed or-
It's consumed, consumed.
Not allowed to be going back into the basin, but I don't think I believe that. I don't think I trust that.
That's the way.
I just wanna hear from somebody to say whatever. And you're on the state water board or something like that, you're president of it or used to be or something?
For the quality association.
Yeah, so, I mean, maybe you can, I just wanna see that, that it going into a septic tank or on the yard is not putting it back into the basin. I just can't, I can't understand that. I can't get around that. The water consumed in the basin stays in the basin, is what I've always understood.
Well, look, as soon as it stays in the Rocky River basin, it doesn't get back to the Yakkin basin.
Right, which is-
But that's our IBT, it's from the Yakkin to the Rocky River, so the state looks at